Something bigger than what's, what's there and um you know, at that time it was never discussed of going that big. I mean, you're talking, you know, four hundred thousand to probably eight hundred thousand, you know, double to do something like that. And that was one of those emergency bridges, you know, that we just, we just did. Because of the shape of the old bridge came back that there was issues and I, you know, to shut that road down, then you're sending them through West Loop. Which that's an emergency kind of escape for trucks to get through, but long term, it was just end up tearing that out.
Good morning, everyone. It is September third, twenty twenty five, ten A M. Harney County Court is in session. If you please stand and join me for the order of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Right. Um, good morning, everybody. Thank you for being here today. Uh, first thing on the agenda, we took care of our vouchers already, uh, late items. We did add one item to the end, um, to discuss, uh, the proposed, uh, division five twelve rules and some alternatives to those rules. Uh, beyond that, next item is agenda approval.
I move to approve today's agenda with the verbal change noted.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the Harney County Court Regular Session Agenda for today, September third. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, and opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Next topic, uh, minutes approval from regular session, August twentieth, twenty twenty five.
I move to approve Harney County Court Meeting Minutes from August twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the August twentieth regular session minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, and opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Um, next topic is, uh, recognition service award for Brett Thomas from our building department. He is celebrating ten years of service with Harney County. Uh, we, uh, thank Brett for his service. He couldn't be here this morning. I think he was out doing the job, right?
Actually, he's at, today's a vacation day with his family at the fair.
Awesome. That works too. So anyway, thank you, Brett. Um, I like to always recognize these on the record and, and, um, let everybody know we thank their service to Harney County. Next topic, uh, opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to address the court of a comment? Not seeing anybody jumping up, we'll move on. Uh, next topic then, old business. Long-term recovery group, uh, emergency plan and donation. We have some members from the long-term recovery group here this morning. Um, last county court, um, Stacy Davies, the chair for the group, uh, made presentation. And, um, there was a request at the time for a ten thousand dollar donation. And Commissioner Dorrell, you weren't here. There's any questions that you might have on that or, or whatnot, but, um, basically, I'm, I'm gonna turn this over to you guys here just a second, but, but basically, uh, the, the long-term recovery group was formed as a result of our springtime flooding to help those needs of, of, of individuals in our community that, that don't have an outlet. There's nothing there for, for assistance. Uh, we didn't make the FEMA delegation or designation for a disaster, so we don't get, we're not gonna get any of that help. Um, we have received, uh, some help from the state, but it's gonna be an ongoing process and there are several, quite a few homes out there that still have need, uh, repairs. So, uh, with that, I will let you guys have it and.
Well, and to add to what you're saying, yes, out of response to the flood, we found it a necessary component for our community or county to fill in a gap, to get people back into their homes with the flood, but also establish this group as the long-term, not only long-term recovery for this flood, but long-term for the county to have an outlet for our local community in case there are other disasters. Uh, as just as today on the radio, I just addressed, it's not it, but when we have another disaster, so, uh, it will look different. Uh, it may not be, uh, look like a flood, could be what urban wildland fire, so whatever. So we have established a, uh, permanent long-term recovery group out of the flood. So, uh, that's in addition to what you were.
And your name for the record.
My hope, Bob Yunker, uh, vice chair. And with that, thank you for having, thanks for having, uh, asked the, uh, the agenda today.
With that, um, anything in the last week or two that, uh, update us on or?
Um, well, I've, I've been underholds, looking in and assessing with, uh, Harney County Hub and, and so on, just getting, uh, dirt down and dirty and see what the, the assessment of recovery looks like. And we still have quite a few homes, quite a few files, quite a few, um, homeowners that, that are still needing, uh, rehabilitation. And that's gonna be ongoing. Uh, due to some funds processed, the timing and so on. Another, and I, the side conversation right before the meeting was when you got talking about mitigation of, of the some cold birds and so. I think I had three, uh, homeowners express and I documented on their files that they are concerned regarding mitigation of future flooding. Uh, they don't wanna see this happen again, some drainage through the town and so on. So I told them I would specifically address it in their document, but here, not only am I here to figure out if we receive the ten grand, if we can put this in the emergency planning, but also put it undocumented, our community is, is concerned regarding what is gonna be done to mitigate or to avoid such a disaster. What can be maybe possible?
Yeah, so as Commissioner Frank mentioned, last week, we had a meeting with, uh, City of Burns, uh, Department of State Lands, Department, uh, State Land Concert D L C D Conservation Division, is that right? And, um, Corps of Engineers and, um, Emergency Management, Oregon Emergency Management was there. So, uh, it is a continuing process. Um, the county has re-engaged an engineer that had done some work for the county several years back. Um, just kinda trying to pick up where they left off and, and see where, where to go to next. So it is on our, it is on our work and whatnot. Um, the state or the county was awarded three million dollars from the state during this legislative session, but we won't see those funds until mid to late twenty twenty seven? Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven, yeah. Um, cause it's a, has to do with bond sales, lottery bond sales and whatnot. So, uh, twenty twenty seven is another long session year. So to be quite honest, I don't expect to see those funds probably until August or September of twenty seven.
Now, those three million dollar, are those earmarked to specifically mitigate flood? Or is it for variety of wastement?
I haven't seen the exact verbiage on it yet and what the allowed uses are gonna be, but the title of it was mitigation. So these river flood mitigation, I believe. So a- anything outside of that and what they might, we might be able to use them for other than planning and, and engineering and all that, I, I don't know yet. Um, so, so the group had made a, a request last session for a ten thousand dollar donation. Um, I don't have the, the flooding line that we created last year. We didn't populate any money in that, um, this year. Uh, we do have sixty three thousand dollars in the contingency line, which would be no, you know, resolution. It's appropriated in contingency. So it would just be by resolution. We can move it to that flood line if the court approves, approves it. Um, but I just wanted to let you know there are funds available, um, if we choose to do that.
Uh, Mr. Yunker, is this a one-time request?
At, at this very moment, yes. Uh, at this, I don't know what next year's funding will look like, but we would like to have that door open for a request.
And, and are you going to the cities as well?
We're going to every, every possible way we can knock on doors to get funds.
You know, years ago, we could easily grant it right away, no problem with no warnings that this is it for a while. But as you probably are well aware, the county's, um, revenues are declining and set, so I'm sure that we'll wanna support, but we, you know, are reopening the flood gates to all the people that used to come and request our help, which we wish for good help. So I just wanted to just approve. I, I mean, that's, I mean, obviously it would be, it would be an automatic for yes, but you know, it's, it's our concern.
We'd like to, if, as much as well of the request, understanding that there could be a no. But you, at this point, yeah, this would be this time around. And I think earlier, it makes, it, it looks, it looks good for everyone around to win for us for the Harney County Long-Term Recovery Group, because now we have an outside A C or the county saying, hey, yeah, we, we see the need and we see the value and it opens a door for more funding. So we may not.
Well, no, it always helps and it helps for when you go out for other grants and things too. That always seems to be something that strengthens an application is, is that there's local support and skin in the game, et cetera.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I was just wondering that the amount that you chose to request, is, was that based on anything in particular or just kinda like, we think that's a reasonable?
I think it was a reasonable considering the economic base of Harney County, where probably, I don't know the pocketbooks of everything, but ten thousand dollars. I think there was previous conversations earlier in this process about ten thousand dollars. So it just made it an easier request. I would say easy number, but ten thousand may not be an easy number. We understand.
Yeah. Um, it, it, it all comes down to, um, ability, you know, uh, the county, as we mentioned, our budget uh, numbers, our revenues have shrunk and are shrinking as, as time goes on. Um, who knows what years to come will, will bring, especially with, I just mentioned the water, the, uh, proposed water, uh, groundwater rules. If those, if those rules go into a place, um, it, it's hard telling what it could do to property values and, and businesses and everything else here in, here in Harney County. So, um, myself, uh, I'm a, a full disclosure here, I'm on the, the Long-Term Recovery Group Board as well. Um, and I kinda mentioned at that time, and originally after the flood, had mentioned to the court about doing a ten thousand dollar, um, donation. And, um, and for those reasons, just to show buy-in from the county and also, you know, to help those people in our community that need the help.
Um, I think that if I can kinda, don't mean to, um, to interrupt, but I just say, I think that in itself is a big exclamation point. Is that ten thousand dollars going back currently?
Right.
As opposed to just saying it looks good.
And I wonder if the Burns Urban Renewal Agency also in their funds, which come from taxpayer dollars, including the counties, what used to go to the county and other, um, uh, special dis- taxing districts, I mean, urban renewal and long-term recovery, uh, please make requests to them as well. Because, yeah, it seems to me that would be a really good entity to get some funding from. Well, Judge, as the budget officer, again, where did you say the funds would come from if we were?
We have sixty three thousand dollars in contingency.
That's for all contingencies?
Yeah, just for, it's appropriated under contingency. So wherever we would need it, it would be, had, need to be moved from there too.
From our reserve?
Yes.
And how much we have in our reserve?
Uh, this year's scheduled, well, the reserve itself has.
Approximately.
Yeah, I wanna say our operating reserve is, um, um, is around nine hundred thousand in the operating reserve. And this year's, this year's budgeted amount to go to the reserve is, um, I apologize. I just come back off of four days of vacation. I'm scattered rain this morning.
Well, that's ballpark.
I wanna say we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately scheduled to go to the.
I'm sure you understand, we want to, we want to help.
Oh, I hear.
We're just trying to be very careful, because we've actually had to cut F T E this year and, and uh, and sixty three thousand for contingency. That's, that can be gone with that, right? And low contingency, so.
The last, the last year, we did dip into, um, our scheduled transfer to the operating reserve because of the flooding.
That's right.
We transferred that money into the flood line. So we didn't do a transfer last year to the operating reserve. Um, right now, beginning year, our beginning fund balance in the operating reserve is eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. And we have scheduled from general fund this year, two hundred and fifty thousand. I bumped that up to try and make up for some of that that we didn't do last year. Um, so we're scheduled to do two hundred and fifty thousand, which would put us over a million at the end of this fiscal year. Um, and that leaves us with that sixty three thousand or whatever this year.
I like the idea of having a central clearinghouse to facilitate the groups to help with recovery and the funds. I think as Mr. Yunker and the judge have pointed out, it's important for us to show buy-in as well. I think that's, that's around fifteen percent of our contingency. My stance has been if we can afford it, I think we should do it. And I think around fifteen percent of our contingency is a reasonable amount that we could afford. And I think that the return on that investment will be far greater than what the investment is, because it'll allow you to put in for grants. I had a conversation with Wyden Merkley's office the other day, and I really liked when they said, who can we talk to to see what further help you guys need? And I can give them a group, so that here's the chair's email, not having to worry about piecing things together, because there's one group that handles it and will have that moving forward as well. I think it was a good investment and I'd be in favor of it.
Um, so, uh, we'll take care of the donation part of it first, since that's where we're on. Um, then, like I said, I'm a member of the board, but I don't think there's any conflict there really, because I'm not benefiting it, you know, or, or whatever. Um, so I don't know if I need to excuse myself or accuse myself. I don't think.
I, I don't think so. I, I, I move to approve a ten thousand donation in the Harney County Contingency Fund for the Long-Term Recovery Group.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve a ten thousand dollar donation to the Harney County Long-Term Recovery Group. Uh, in the amount of ten thousand dollars, which will come from, from the contingency line of the general fund. Um, any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye, aye, and opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. So what we'll have to do is next county court session, we'll have to do a resolution, actually moving that money from one line to another. So, um, it'll be a couple of weeks before we can get that.
Sure. Thank you for that. Harney County Long-Term Recovery Group. I know, I wanna mention Sue Others is here on the app and support. Liam Starbuck here is part of our group. They, they thank us.
We do, yeah. Yeah. Um, if, just for record keeping, because we always attach an invoice or something to a, to a, the check that's cut. If we could get a letter from the Long-Term Recovery Group, uh, requesting that, that donation.
Absolutely.
And then we can attach that with minutes and, and whatnot. And then that goes with the check and shows where the cash went to.
Our county thanks you. Those, who's been adopted is, by long behalf of them, I would say thank you.
Another kinda associated topic with the Long-Term Recovery Group is the emergency plan that the emergency manager is working on. Uh, during the, and as it came out during our conversation the other day, um, damage assessment uh, tended to be a little bit, um, sporadic between several different organizations that, that data wasn't shared between, and then it was hard to determine, um, what are the actual needs? And it was hard to get that information from one organization or another that, that did those assessments. And the plan, it's, it's being discussed that we potentially look at the Long-Term Recovery Group as the staff or the entity that would do those, um, especially on residential type of situations, uh, personal property residential type of situations, um, that could go out and do all that, do it once, share that information with the entities that need it then, Red Cross or whoever, but it comes from one consolidated point. And the information is, is consistent across the board whenever we're asking the state or the federal government or whoever for assistance. So, uh, that was, was and has been one item during this past, uh, event, uh, the emergency that, uh, is kinda being filtered out to.
We also wanna be that piece where, um, you have the immediate response of the disaster. Then that closes up. We want that, uh, we, the Long-Term Recovery would love to see the progression of what's that look like a year down the road? Who is to help these homeowners get through and, and, let's say, um, sanitary and a secure home? Well, hard, well, now we have that piece in place. Not only do the assessment, but also who, where does outside agencies and entities who want to donate money, where do they go? And we'd like to be part of that established, uh, movement or, or procedure.
Yeah. Well, and I think as Commissioner Frank said, just being able to tell our federal delegation where's the point of contact for what still needs to be done on the individual level.
Yeah.
Um, that's not a whole bunch of bouncing around there and there's one place and that's it. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for taking the time.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for your service.
Yeah.
Next topic, economic development, next steps. So, um, Commissioner Dorrell, uh, we weren't able to attend, but we held the Economic Development Work Session. Uh, heard from the varying entities that provide services to our county, to our small businesses, entrepreneurs and whatnot. Um, my intent with that meeting was to identify the services that are already being provided by other agencies, organizations, but to also get a picture and an idea of where we wanna go with our economic, economic development dollars, uh, in the future. Now, as a recap, um, our, our contract with, uh, um, Greg Smith and company is, uh, stopped. We're not, we're not in that agreement anymore. So we need to find a new direction or a new, uh, step for those funds, for those lottery dollars. And for the record, for people, those are lottery dollars that we get for economic development. They don't come from the general fund. Um, they're specific to that purpose.
Judge, um, perhaps at the next county court meeting, you could have, or, or else just send it to us, the regulations on, on what that money can and cannot be spent on.
I know we have to do a, an annual report on what we have spent it on, um, and we, you know, usually haven't, haven't had any problems with that and the purposes that we've used it for, but I will bring a specific verbiage.
Yeah, just like to, I've never looked at it, so, um, just email it even, uh, I think, sure. I mean, I've been le- leaving off, uh, an option that we've never done before that is allowed. I mean, I don't know yet till I see it.
Any other, I'm, I'm just gonna leave it on old business, because it's kind of a work in progress, but any other ideas or concerns or, uh, work? I thought as we kinda refine more, what direction we wanna go in with these funds and, and if or who we might want to retain, um, for these funds, um, that we might eventually bring in a town hall type thing with the community. This initial meeting was just to hear from specific groups and organizations that provide services to our community. Um, but then maybe, maybe somewhere along the line, we do a town hall type thing and hear from our local businesses and, and what they see at their level.
I, I would like that. I would like it to be more or less a, a, a public meeting to receive input. And not only businesses, but just individual citizens who, who have views on it as well as to, um, where they think those limited dollars, what very important dollars, uh, where they would like to see it go in the future. Just hear from them, hear from the public. We, we've heard from the providers that already exist. We hear from the public. I know we're always, we have our thoughts and we hear from other colleagues in other counties and, and what they use that money for, so.
We have roughly about a hundred thousand dollars in here. Um, right now, uh, a portion of that that's being spent out of that is for our web design. Um, and I believe that, you know, probably the justification behind it's been that way since before I took office, but the, the justification behind that was that was our forward-facing, uh, to the public on Harney County, uh, uh, you know, Harney County government. Um, but I'm thinking next year, and as, as a result of this, I'm thinking that I'm gonna switch the funding for that we're process, um, into other areas. Um, there's, there's other departments that utilize that and rely heavily on, on that website for advertising, well, outreach, not advertising, but outreach for services such as the health department and whatnot.
Processing payments and various things.
So I'm thinking that I might, I'm gonna take a deeper look at it and see where we can, uh, kinda divvy up the payments of that based on the departments that are using it and have it come out of those funds instead of all coming out of, out of the lot, lottery funds.
I think that'd be good to look into.
So roughly, we have about a hundred thousand dollars that, that we can look at for economic development. Um, I, I'll say that, that, you know, depending on what we come up with and, and maybe we look at it year to year, or maybe we look at a, a contract again with another economic development, uh, company. Uh, but whatever it is, however we decide to do it, I, I'm, I'm gonna say I'm not in favor of piecemealing it out into smaller pieces, because the return on investment won't, won't be there.
And, you know, over the years, there've been often prior to me being on the court, et cetera, there's often been a contract awarded to an economic development provider or coordinator. And sometimes their role was supposed to be to recruit an employer to come here, employers to come here and locate here. There've been small business support, entrepreneur support. There's been, um, not as much targeted grant writing. I mean, the county, we have a couple of projects, but I know some counties actually, they have their strategic plan, which we're working on, and then they know where to actually put some really good quality grant writing and, um, strategy toward, toward helping, you know, you can't survive on just grants, but, but it's a piece that I'd like to see the county. But at any rate, it can look many different ways. Like you say, it could be an annual decision on the part of the county court on our intent to use the money this coming year for, it can be various things. And once we look over the O R S or whatever language, you know, we can feel confident in, um, taking the whole approach and looking at it.
One thing that came to light for me from that meeting is that we already have a group locally in Vis Harney that is doing a lot of that work. I think we envisioned for our Economic Development Department, and they already have relationships and regular meetings with all those acronyms that were in the room. And so to me, with the information I have right now, I would think the next steps I would like to see is to see if their board is willing to take more of that work on. And if that was the direction we decided to go to bolster that, because like I said, they're already doing a lot of that work. I don't think it will expend our entire budget for that. And I would like to learn more about what Holly has been talking with as a Crook County, about how they have contracted Jefferson County. They've contracted some services and I, I just wanna be clear, anytime I talk about grants, I realize it's not the grant writing that's hard, it's the monitoring grants. And so that's part of what I'd like to learn more about. Is with those services, are they just writing the grants or do they help monitor them? And so to me, I think we could get a good bang for our buck going that way. And there's a chance, based on if I'm remembering some of the numbers correctly, that we, we wouldn't spend that whole hundred thousand dollars between those two things. And as much as I hate the idea of using government money for loans, if we have those lottery dollars and we have to use for that, but we don't expend our full hundred thousand, we could explore the possibility of doing small business. Of doing small business loans or something because we'd have that money and that's all it can be used. So that's what I.
We do have two funds and this is something that I want to clean up in the next budget cycle as well. But we do have two funds for um a Main Street beautification and a and a economic development uh loans. Uh they're both loan, uh zero, zero interest loans. Um of about, I think between the two funds, maybe there's seventy to eighty thousand dollars between the two funds. Um I would, I would like to clear those two. Funds up and join them into one fund, consolidate that money into one fund. And then again, decide, you know, how maybe we want to do that as far as loans. There is a process called Kiva Loans. Um and it's and it's all managed by the organization itself. Um they take a little bit of an administrative uh fee off of. Off of uh each loan to fund them. Uh but they do all of the loan approval, they all do all of the the research and the application and everything on on business loans. The tricky part of getting to to describe it, and I'm a little, I'm not real good at this, but basically the applicant has to go out, it's kind of like a. Like a Kickstarter. Loan process, kind of. But the applicant has to go out and secure a certain percentage of the loan through private investments, through through private. Individuals, basically. Once they meet that that amount, then the then the amount from Kiva kicks in. And and it just kind of shows a little bit more. More skin in the game.
Did it, did you say it's a low interest?
Yeah, there, I want to say currently they're around six percent or something like that. They're they're not market. Full market um rate, but uh but they are interest. And then as the individual pays pays the loan back, payments come back to the county. So whatever the monthly payments are, they they would, it would come back to the county and then it's revolving that way. So then as as the as the fund is rebuilt, or if there's enough money in there for the next applicant. Then it gets rebuilt and reloaned out.
Um going back to what Commissioner Frank, when he mentioned that um Holly is is aware of a program. For, again, I'm not looking at just grants, but. Jefferson County, last year at the AOC District Two meeting. That's where I first heard about their program and how awesome it is is producing for them. And and it takes the management and they're they're succeeding getting loans that they want, I mean, uh grants and. Again, it it sounded better than any other grant writing uh services. The this year, the AOC District Two meeting is in, I believe in Primeville, it's on October second. Um I have delegated, I'm the chair, I've delegated the alternate chair. Commissioner, a day or from Deschutes to chair that meeting in person, I'll be attending by Zoom. But at this point, I'm staying closer to home for another month or two. Before I start doing overnight travel and um. So if you two are going, you'll have plenty of opportunity to really hear more from our fellow colleagues. And I would encourage you to to have conversations, October second, yes. It's like from ten to three.
That's the district?
Yeah, it's our district and we're grouped with Lakeview and Brooke and Jefferson and Deschutes, not our traditional all the way east to. It's in, it's a good forum. We just meet once a year, so.
The Kiva, just follow up a little bit, the Kiva loans, there are several applicants here in here in the Burns, Harney County, Burns, Hines, Harney County area. That do have Kiva loans currently. Uh you can restrict them to specific. Uh zip codes, specific, like if you wanted it one year to be nothing but for Main Street, then you could restrict it to Main Street. You can restrict them to um. Minority businesses, startups, anything you want to do, any any way you want to do it, you you could. Or you can just blanket it for Harney County and say, you know, this is all Harney County open to. Um so it's kind of, it's kind of good that you can use it to target, you know, maybe specific. Uh neighborhoods or districts or cities or whatever. Um another option is. Is G E O D C also manages uh loan funds that way. And we could take those funds and make them available to G E O D C again for loans here in Harney County. And they would manage them for us. So there's a couple of different options there for those funds, for that seventy to eighty thousand dollars to to uh. You know, how how we would manage it.
I like all the things I'm hearing in this discussion. Thank you.
Um anything else on economic development, next steps? All right, moving on to new business, jail inspection and update from Lieutenant Todd. Sir.
Well, I got this. Yeah, I got the my old inspection here just to go through, should be pretty quick, I would imagine. I guess as far as updates go for the jail, we're fully staffed now and um everything seems to be going fairly well over there, it's pretty handy folks and uh. The new construction uh project for the jail seems to be going, moving ahead pretty well. We can find out a lot more. After September ninth was our design meeting, yeah, and so. Don't have a lot more to add to that until we learn a little more, but that's pretty much the news from the jail right now.
If I might piggyback on that, so we have October ninth, we have the design. The contractor is going to bring over their architects.
October?
September, September ninth, so. I can't get into September for some reason. Either they want to be in August or October.
Okay.
Um so September ninth, they're coming over. Um I have a con uh an attorney, contract attorney, working on um our contract for them that will execute at that time. They preliminarily know that part of our funds, three million dollars are tied to uh ARPA funds and they have to be expend expended by December of twenty twenty six. I think the last, which I sure hope this goes on this timeframe, but they're talking about having this project done by fall of twenty six.
Now, could you clarify, when you say this project, what are you talking about?
The jail. Just the jail.
New jail, updated.
Uh new jail.
Just want to make sure it's on.
Yeah, it's it's new jail. Uh now what we, what they end up coming up with out of the September ninth meeting is a portion of the existing jail. Whether they can repurpose that and and then add on new new cells and new. You know, whatever, all they need, um you know, maybe, but we don't know that yet till they sit down and look at the facility, see what kind of condition it's in. And maybe maybe a part of this old jail here turns into a kitchen or something. I'm just, you know, throwing spitballing.
Lieutenant Todd, what time is that meeting?
I'm not sure yet. I don't think they said it.
I want to say.
It's not the one that's supposed to be all day?
Yes. I got eight a. Yeah.
Thank you.
Pippers faster than my calendar on my phone. Yes, eight AM on the night. Um been, we've been tracking down, trying to track down old plan blueprints and. All that kind of stuff for them, just make their, help them out, get it going faster. So I'm sorry, sir.
So I'm ready to go ahead with the, which is the verbal part of inspection. I sent you guys blank copies of the inspection form. Um I have an old copy here, just to.
And and this is because the governing body, the county court annually. Needs to inspect the jail and um sign off on on stuff for our jail.
It's basically for this for our D O C inspection, they need to see. Everybody know what's going on in the jail.
And we have the oldest jail in Oregon.
Do we?
Yeah, last I heard.
Yeah.
Nineteen sixty three or four it was built.
Either go to the oldest or dang near close.
And it, under the circumstances of all, everything that's changed in in incarceration and. Requirements over the years and our our budget, it's it's amazing what, how good a jail it is. I know it's hard, so the, thank you.
We've been making new for quite a while. Pretty soon, it's not, it's going to be, it's going to take take too much money to keep it going, reset and so.
Yep.
All right, uh already questions, uh does the jail participate in the voluntary or in jail standards? Yes, we do, as best we can. There's some things you cannot just feel a lay of the silo for most part we do.
Anything come to mind that's significant that we don't?
Well, just right offhand, uh before we built this, I go recreationally, that was one of the standards that we couldn't meet. Now we can. There are a few, I probably can't pull them out of my head, but um for a long, for quite a while, we couldn't comply with them to um deputies on duty. All times, but now we can uh for the most part, I mean, aside from these lenses or not. So for the most part, we do.
And I'm sorry, that question, was that with the O S A A standards?
For your jail standards. Question number two, says, has the facility been inspected every two years, so into the guidelines of the Oregon State Sheriff's Association and the Oregon Jail Standards Command Council? And yes, uh two years ago was inspected, but I went to the O S A inspection, um and we did quite well. Uh this year, unfortunately, we will not be participating in that. It's a voluntary inspection. But the next year around, we will be able to do that. It's a. Takes a lot of work to do to participate in that. Six, eight months of pretty solid work to get to that. I have not been able to do that this year, so before we got skip at this time.
So take into consideration that. So when you say this year, are you talking twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six?
Twenty twenty five.
Okay. And if things go out, go go as planned, twenty twenty six, we are liable to be under construction.
Yes.
So you may not be able to participate again until twenty seven.
As ever two years, so it would be twenty twenty seven, but. I don't know what kind of hurdles the new jail throw in that will next, but we we will, we will cross every, we'll get there.
Lieutenant Todd, did you say that's a voluntary uh thing? And so what is? The detriment when we don't participate do in it to us to?
There is not a lot of downsides. Um. It can help us if we have lawsuits, C I S likes to see uh us take part in this. Now, if they're accredited, accredited, we uh. If there's some sort of lawsuit in jail, we, there's a restand, a lot better standing.
Thank you.
I don't think we'll get a bad yet review and people won't stay there.
They keep going back, so let's be, let's not be curious around that.
Get a lot of return visitors.
Uh please provide for provide reports or report summaries for all required inspections. I actually have them all here, I've just been going through them. I have our fire sprinkler, fire suppression. Uh next week, I should have the fire marshal inspection taking place. I just had a county health inspection last week. I've not got results back. Verbally, I got the results, but not the actual report. And one of the reasons I'm going for trying to keep the commissioner inspection, that's required, I'm done get um, and so I got a list. Grand jury inspection was back in October, I believe, um last year and uh. That's good, Sheriff's Association, I'm not going to do, we have the twenty twenty. Three inspection will be quite well, so um.
Does the grand jury inspection, is that required? By whatever date you're shooting for?
It's required by D O C inspection, um and it's only every two years, so more within that criteria problem.
Thank you.
And we had the first health inspection we've had in many, many, many years, because we're now about county. And before, nobody would come here to inspect this and we actually did pretty well for not really knowing what we were supposed to comply with, so. Tiny little things, we just got it through and that's it. And you guys are welcome to read these if you want.
Um can you get those to to Holly and then she'll scan it well? When we can.
Copy them and then then I'll scan when the prayers were.
Yeah.
I get those too.
Okay.
Is the facility providing law library access to all A I Cs regardless of whether they are represented by an attorney? Um yes, on our um kiosk system in our jail, there's a, there's access to all of. O R S system, it's the law, law libraries available to them all day long, every day.
What are A I Cs?
Adults in custody.
And do they use it pretty much or not too much?
Uh I'm not really sure. They could, I I don't know if they're watching, so.
Do they have to, as part of that system, they don't have to pay for time on that, do they?
No, not if you use the law library. What is the jail management system and how old is the jail management system? Um it's, we use Justice Data Solutions and it's about seven years old now and um. We're going to be switching to a new system come November and that's the um Mobile Office Program, sure you can probably heard a little about. All the different agencies and and city agencies and it's going to be using this. Next question is, is the J M S currently meeting the jail's needs? Fairly, so that's why we're getting a new system. And I'll, that must be more automatic, we still do a lot of stuff on paper. Uh it should help us a lot, just from everything from accounting to just jail stats and day to day operations. And also the next question is, is there a better product on the market? Yes, because we're, we're going, we're going, but maybe about one minute.
So the this new system, just. For the record, um the the interoperability between Burns and Hines and the county. Um and the jail itself, it all meshes, right?
Yeah, it'll be phenomenal. I mean, an officer picks somebody out on the street and there's types of information in the computer. It'll already be on our job, here's what they arrived here, so that would be. Looking for ways and just obtain information on a person, everything's connected together now. What is the total bed count for the facility and how many dedicated male and female beds? Well, we have twenty three beds. Twenty two normal beds, twenty thirty, the twenty thirty is an isolation bed, um and we do not distinguish between males and females. We have a few people around, just depending on how many people we have in the in the facility. Um obviously, males and females separated. And the daily average population, I just look for the stats. And the last one, twenty, uh last twelve months was nine males to one female was average. How many inmates were forced, were forced, released last year, zero. How many assaults appeared in the facility in the last year? There's about, I'd say, two to four. It's a little subjective, would you consider an assault? I don't consider just them shoving each other around and stopping when we yell at them an assault, so I say two to four. Um there is zero assaults on staff and zero staff assaults on.
Two to four. Justifiable or whatever of.
Two decent ones, and then there's a couple where it's one of your like, yeah, whatever. How many total inmate grievances were filed yet last year? Well, this one a whole lot compared to last year. Um last year, I had thirty two grievances and this year I had a hundred and thirty six. Uh two reasons being, uh one, we have an individual in there that's. Not the most mentally stable individual and he writes grievances about things that happened twenty years ago that nobody knows about, so a lot of them are just.
Grievances about his jail stay?
Pretty much, and everything, ever, so um that guy is one, hey, he probably stuck a good fifty or sixty more on about there just one. I mean, he's the same expressions every day, I mean, and then we've been dieting down rules in the facility quite a bit, so there's a lot of inmates that are not very happy, so. Actually, legitimate grievances where I'd actually have to do something about them, probably maybe five or ten possibly. I mean, and it's stretched out a few.
But by statute, you have to receive and record all of them?
And I have to respond to all the legitimate ones. I don't have to respond to ones that are just um. I didn't get enough dinner or something like that, you know, so, which we can recite through those. Who is our medical provider? We just uh switched from uh. Sage Country Me- uh Medicine, Dr. Miss Patrick, switched over to the Harney County Health Department. And we increased our doctor visits by. Um instead of once every two weeks, the doctor come by every week and nurse visits every week.
Does that, does that cost us more in our budget?
We're gonna see, I I I don't think it's going to cost anymore. Um it just, it's kind of fluctuating. Medical budget fluctuates a lot. I mean, some things like they had somebody go to the hospital, I started a bill for eight thousand bucks, you know, for an annual ride, two blocks, you know, so. The medical budget's really a hard thing for you.
Didn't they get some funds through the Modernization in Healthcare Act? To help offset some of that?
Seven thousand.
Yeah.
She knows, I I don't know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it seemed like, I couldn't remember the amount, but it seemed like they had gotten some money here from the. From the Modernization in Healthcare Act to offset those services.
I do know that um. The actual cost of the services from the health department should be very similar, first factor to the end of the day. But we've needed, we needed more doctor visits, everything's kind of hard on this side. Is there a certified medical doctor or registered nurse on the minimum? Is there a certified medical doctor or registered nurse on day or minimum of four hours per day as a midweek or three or six days a year? No, there's not, they, they come by once a week and a nurse comes, if I call her, she probably come every day, if I call her, but she comes as needed. We just, it would just be a financial hardship on this entire county to have a doctor, a nurse just sitting around the jail for four hours every day, you know, so.
So on a weekend, I mean, to go to emergency room or, or, I mean, what do you?
Pretty much, I mean.
If, if there were, were.
It's expensive, but it's probably more expensive to pay a doctor to sit down and practice a little bit.
Yeah, I didn't think about it until, till just now, but, uh, an, uh, a benefit that's available to our staff, the county employees. Is telemedicine, like a nurse and on, um, on-call nurse line type thing.
Yeah.
I wonder if we could set something like that up for inmates, you know, for small minor type of things that we call it on, uh. A nurse's line first?
Me and, uh, Kelly Singh also spoke about this a little bit, I think we're gonna work on in the future, some sort of telemedicine on tablets. A lot of things got put on hold on that Oregon Health Plan, it was gonna, you know, it was gonna be, uh, available to incarcerated folks. That whole program kind of fell apart, and so a lot of the, the little side projects fell apart, all to the wayside as well, so. Well, that program didn't go away, it will, it's still in the back corner of the state, but we'll see how that goes, but I'd like to do something with that. And our pharmacy provider is the Safeway Pharmacy currently. When was the last time your onsite pharmacy was inspected? Uh, we don't have an onsite pharmacy. Um, next question is, uh, does your facility provide mental health services? Uh, no, we don't. Uh, we provide services through Symmetry Care or Crisis Defense only.
Do you know, Lieutenant Todd, is that a situation that is similar for some other jails in the state besides ours, where they. You know, have crisis services, but they don't necessarily have ongoing mental health services for the inmates?
I do know a lot of larger facilities have onsite mental health workers. Um, I'm not sure on this one, Joe, you're, I've, I've heard through different events of that. All those smaller facilities suffer from the same problems we do, they're just, it's, it's hard to get mental health care in jails unless you have onsite provider. Oh, please describe or provide a schedule that shows staffing levels for both medical services and mental health services. Um, maybe I know a schedule that shows that, I do know medical staffing, they come by once a week. As better schedule allows, if you're going there Tuesday, and mental health services just as on a as needed basis. And some of these in crisis, I call them up and they have been very responsive in the last year, so. Um, is your facility ADA compliant? Uh, we have partial compliance, uh, through OSSA. We do have an ADA compliant cell with the ADA toilet and, uh, bars and all that good stuff, um. That's, for the most part, I mean, we, our door to wide enough to get wheelchair through, I don't like this, so. Is your facility prison re-elimination act compliant? No, we're not. I just do the nature of our, the size of, I mean, the, the design, layout of the facility, we cannot advise on people twenty-four seven, and that's, uh. How we need to come compliant, so, um, maybe the new facility will come, apply it to that. Um.
Is there, is, I mean, cameras only do so much, but is there any kind of, uh. Rules for privacy or, or anything in the cells themselves? I mean, do they have? Any kind of right to visual privacy, so to speak, in the cell?
That's sort of, uh, uh, sorry, interrupt, uh, sort of videos for them, but we can't have them, can't view them, I mean, in the shower or on the toilet. And which we don't, um, it comes closed in isolation cell for obvious reasons, because they're doing it there, but we still can't be like doing that. Um, so there is rules, as far as just being visible to other inmates, there's not many rules as far as that goes. Uh, we do allow them, the only time we allow them to break the rule of hanging things in their cell, we'll allow them to hang it, especially before they're using their restroom, if, I mean, if only. Seems like kind of a basic human, uh, you know, said, we'll never break.
So in new design, new construction, new design for direct line of sight observation of the cells. Will they be designed so that toilets, commodes and showers or whatnot, that they can? Transit those spaces or whatever without being observed or?
Yeah, it'll be partitions.
Little, little pony wall type of partition around it.
Depending on how it's, we, you know, we're not that far from the design stage, but other facilities I've seen, either there's a small little open door room. And, or there's a small partition or DC bathroom, so, um, and it won't be visible.
Thank you.
What is your current security and non-security staffing levels? We have no non-security staff, but currently eight, um. Individuals that work in the jail, one's sergeant, and right now I'm trying to, I'm looking to promote another sergeant right now. And then, and then at, in addition to myself, so I make nine total. But we do have ten positions open and I chose, kept the ten positions vacant right now, because. Honestly, I don't know what I would do with that person, so. Um, so we're doing very well and coming out of a season of doing very poorly in jail, so. Please provide a recent schedule, I have one right here, um. Or describe the schedule of command or supervisor staff. And supervisor staff, I try to keep on day shift, I have a, I have a, a senior deputy, right? Is, um, works directly opposite from the, the sergeants, and she pretty much handles, uh. In questions, I need a superintendent for, and they usually were one of the base shifts, currently they work for, and they work for them. And, uh, the normal schedule is just a four-on-four voting, and I can get copy of that if you'd like that as well. And so right now we have two people in the, most of the time, so. Are the current staffing levels safe for both staff and inmate population? The answer is yes to that. And who is my current food service provider? That's senior sign. And are the diet, are meals dietitian approved as required by the Oregon jail standards? Yes, we're contract, live contract with Amy Dobson, and she's a certified dietitian. And she reviews the menu and, uh, honors the caloric, caloric intake. Are there religious and medical diets available in the facility? Yes, on a taste-by-taste basis, and they'll be approved by Amy Dobson's board. How many hot meals and cold meals are served per day? At a minimum, one hot meal daily in general, as that is. Do you provide inmate commissary? And does commissary include high-bean items in food? Yes, yes, they both goes, um, and we provide commissary once a week. Whatever you want, basically snacks, candies, chips, candy bars, lotion, soap, all the, all that stuff. We're looking to go to a commissar's provider, you're soon enough, once it gets out of, uh, the county, uh, um. County, I turn to give movies of the contract, there's still work on it. What is the overall condition of the facility? That's for you guys to decide when we do your, your walkthrough, so. After I finish my list of questions right now.
So what I had envisioned here to be able to take care of this all at once is if you have that, that inspection sheet. With those yeses and nos and the, you know, brief sentences, you know, whatever, who does your, your meal, senior center? Whatever, you know, with that information in there, and then we can sign it. Okay, if you get it to us and with that information in there, and then we can sign it, each one of us can sign it individually. And then as far as a walkthrough, did everybody want to schedule that for this afternoon or?
I, it may, it might be Commissioner Frank's first time, I don't know, but, you know, I have done it numerous times, and so I know what I look for. And I think we can do it efficiently, especially since he's already prepped us with a lot of this information. But if you all can, we can redo it separately, but I know he's under the gun to get it done pretty soon.
Oh, yeah, well, by September twenty-fifth, we'll be the best, and as far as today goes, the earliest time it's available would be the best for today. I don't know what that looks like yet.
So the only concern I have about us doing it jointly is the forum issue. Um, I mean, we're all together and it's outside the public. So I have, that's the only issue I have about us going to do a walkthrough all together at the same time. I think, you know, if we have to, by September twenty-fifth, each one of us should be able to.
I'll do it today.
For July one.
One fifteen.
I can do that.
Okay. I'm ready.
I'm not worried about the quorum issue because I feel like we won't deliberate about anything else, and it's, I mean, we don't even have to deliberate at all.
I mean, it would be nice, frankly, at least, I mean, I've never done it with the other county court members, and that way we're all seeing it. All at the same time, and anything that would have occurred to, uh, Commissioner Frank that went not to me, and then he raises it, then it's like. That helps my awareness as well, but at any rate, if, whatever the decision is, uh, I would like to do it today, would you?
Well, I raised the issue with quorum, I don't, you know, however. However, you all want to proceed, but, I mean, if we, if we go.
It's not a.
As a group, if we go as a group.
It's part of our duties, I don't know, just seems like, I can follow around, it's probably best.
Did you sure there was no deliberation?
That, that's probably not the worst idea, because then would that just be an addendum to the county court recording? And then if people wanted to see the inspection, because it's not private, right? That would be good for transparency.
Is there any concerns about recordings inside the jail, security-wise?
Can't be. Yes, there, there is, I was, you started talking about that, my mind was, my mind was surfed on that. I'm not sure if we can report it or not, I know.
What about your body cam?
Those aren't available for public.
Oh, true, yeah.
About auditory recording?
We, like, we had OPD doing an interview, and we only get the audio just for that reason.
Is that true, like, to get it done today?
That might be a good, then we have the technology to record it and. That way we're not seeing any of the, the inmates are not, you know, being shown and none of that stuff and.
I'll check into this, but, 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 as far as I goes, and, uh. Um, if you were willing, would you be willing to do it today at one fifteen?
I would like to.
Okay. Judge Hart?
Uh, I don't.
Yeah, I have a hard time envisioning how someone's complaint to the Oregon Adviser Commission would look if the three of us went through the jail walkthrough. Just don't feel like we'd have a lot of steam, but that it technically is a violation, but.
Let's go ahead, let's go ahead and, and plan for one fifteen.
Alright.
Um. And we'll audio record.
Alright. I'm kind of looking at the issue anyways, about the video, because I should have the answer to that one.
First is maybe you could stack it like twenty-minute intervals.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else on jail inspection?
What do you need from us generally?
As far as this inspection goes?
Support in general.
Um, we've been doing for years, just saying yes to my vegetarian means.
Um, so hopefully this jail project, um. By about this time next year, should be looking at a ribbon cutting.
That would be phenomenal.
Yeah, a little later, maybe, October, November-ish maybe, but close by this time next year.
That'd be, that'd be great.
Time, Kevin.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll see you this afternoon.
Alright.
Um, next topic, new business, community corrections biennial plan.
Alright, so you should have found in front of you two different, and our governmental agreement is six zero nine one. Which is our biennial plan that we spend every two years for the state, which is our main funding source for community corrections. The second one, uh, which is a much shorter contract, which is six nine three five, is our measure fifty-seven. Uh, which is another funding source that we utilize, uh, so as you look through the plan, it's going to be very similar to what we've had in years past. Uh, there are a few notable changes though, uh, as some of you are aware, we lost our primary PO to retirement. So we are in the process of onboarding, hopefully within the next couple of months, we delayed that in part due to vegetarian issues. Um, with our original budget was looking good, like we could bring somebody on in June, when our April forecast came out, that was not the case. We only have about two thousand dollars more for the two years than we did in the, um, twenty-three, twenty-five biennium, so we're about the same. So just trying to hold off a little bit, um, before we start onboarding a study, but we have some potential options, hopefully they will work out. Um, the other noticeable change will be that our sex offender treatment program ended last October, November. Uh, also due to retirement, um, and so we are working, I did budget some funds to that. Just because that is a needed treatment, um, but we do have some options for telehealth or partnering with the neighboring county as well. So we're still exploring those options, uh, as we've been forward, but otherwise I think everything remains the same. We're still doing the transitional housing, we're still using GPS monitors, uh, and still working a rantry. Uh, type program as people return to the community for visit.
What's your? Average supervisory caseload?
So currently we have about fifty-three adults on supervision, that's been about our standard for the last couple of years. Um, probably about three years ago, I want to say we had about seventy-five as the normal, um. So we're starting to climb back up, but it's pretty slow.
I was, I was gonna say, based on. It's not all, uh, maybe it is, is it, is it primarily releases? From, from state?
Not necessarily.
Corrections, it, it, yeah, as I said, it wouldn't.
No, um, I, I shouldn't have brought the chart with me, but we periodically receive a chart or a graph from the state. That shows what our numbers are for probation, post-prison, and then what we call local control. And, uh, the post-prison and probation I think are pretty close, for how many we're supervising for each, and the post-prison would be those that are returning from the custody.
And does your number that's kind of stayed the same relate at all to, um. The jail, um, statistics, do you know?
Uh, as far as.
Adults in custody and then release or things like that?
Not necessarily, uh, but we do have, we do have a few that are in our jail currently. Um, but that, I mean, that changes all the time, and there's no real consistency to that. I think in our caseload, I want to say the lowest number we had dipped to is around forty, um. And that's what lowest I've ever seen, in twenty fifteen, when I started, we had a hundred and twenty consistently on supervision, so that's a huge, huge difference.
Wow. Good job.
Yes, um, there are two other things I would highlight though, um, in the, I believe it's under the treatment aspect. We've partnered with Symmetry Care over the years, um, pretty consistently, one of the things we did. I believe it's the last biennium or the one before, we worked to start, uh, the care mentor program, well, they already had that piece in place. But we now have a recovery mentor that spends part of the time in our office, so we can have a direct handoff of the treatment. Um, and it's, I've seen it work for people who are really resistant to go to treatment. Um, just having that person who's been where they are has been a, a huge lift, um, in helping for that. And then the second thing was after a state audit. Uh, within the last three years, there was a recommendation to bring Thinking for Change, which is a cognitive skills-based treatment. Um, Symmetry Care and I got trained alongside each other, and so we can co-facilitate that training. And so I've stepped in if, if they need a second facilitator, if one's gone, um, so that's been a good partnership that we continue.
What, any general comment on the nature of the challenges for your population, um, did, you know, what are? The challenges now compared to maybe? Ten years ago, I mean, are they the same or?
They're very similar, um, so the landscape has changed a lot in that, you know, we saw the legalization of marijuana, we saw. The decriminalization of other drugs and substances and I think what we're seeing now or the population we have right now is more severely mentally ill. Than what we've seen before, they're very time consuming. We have three individuals in particular, one can take up your your entire day, every day for a week, um, just trying to help them when they're in crisis. And so that's one of think through people, um, which is not, but yeah, very time consuming, um, and so, you know, same thing with that. We partner closely with symmetry care, um, to try to make sure that our services is plugged in. The addiction rate is also, I think some of the addiction issues we've been facing is more significant to you than it was before. Uh, in part because of how Oregon's changed how they look at it, um, and so that's definitely been a challenge.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So. Plans, um. I guess. Signature to approve the plans and the agreement, um, are my signature on them, any issues or concerns with me signing these plans and agreements?
No, um, uh, I expressed my concern yesterday, I'm just them changing to Hardy County Court and County Judge. And taking out Board of Commissioners and looking at what's been posted after um. Lottie was able to. Get one to change some, I still see one of the places, I think we can just line out, like right county court, I was just noticing. Where they are.
There was this a face somewhere in the body and I don't remember which page it was on, it listed both, it said Board of Commissioners or County Court.
I didn't see that.
Was that in the agreement?
But each, the two documents, there's a place in each one and I'll catch it when you hand it down to me and just line through it, because. Again, technically, there is no such thing as a Hardy County Board of Commissioners or a chair, like a Board of Commissioners here.
And I believe the state was fine with that, um, my conversation with them was really around the signature lines, but I don't believe they had an issue.
Well, they, you know, the contract is totally fine to have a. And change with an initial, if they reject it, they reject it, but. But thank you for trying.
Oh, yeah.
I remember this being shoe. Or is it shoe? I'm sure there's some other counties courts that. They contact with.
And then I, all I will need once that is signed is I will submit it back to the state.
Did you just want?
And they will put the finalized copy um once they sign it as well.
One thing while people are looking over that. And signing. Because I associate this plan with the lipstick. And one of the things that we talked about that meeting is we don't have a lay person from the county appointed. And all the appointments are through the county court, if I'm not mistaken. And so I think the group was gonna look and see if there were any other appointments they needed to do, but I. Think I remember us flying that in the past and then, you know, Wilfridston parties and that's probably something we need to re-advertise. To try and get someone unless they. Informally came up with someone that was willing to do it at that last meeting, but it didn't sound like they were in our papers.
Um, there was a person present who was put on the spot, who might be interested, they have reached out. Uh, to ask more about what the expectation is, and so my plan is to reach out to them this week, hopefully. So I think, I think they're open to it, um, I don't know about salt, but we'll work on it.
You give me a good thing.
Yeah, I agree too.
LP and SCC.
Thank you.
Which stands.
Low Republic Safety Forum Meeting Council, there you go.
It took me a couple of years to throw them out.
I was hoping somebody else had it down real quick because I was gonna fumble through it, so, um.
They're ready for you to sign, so we just need to make a motion, right?
Uh, um, I signed them.
So we just for the majority to approve them.
What's that?
Did we verbally approve them for the record?
Um.
For you to sign?
We can, I don't know how, I mean, it, because it's kind of a, one of them falls under administrator slash county judge, so I don't know if it really needs to be.
Well, better to do it to not.
Well, we can. I think last year that came just straight to me for a signature, so I don't know. I mean, we can, however the court wants to.
I I I moved to approve the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven. Uh, biennial plan and the twenty twenty five, twenty to twenty twenty seven, measure fifty seven plan presented. By Community Corrections is their biennial plan approval today.
Emotion's been made in seconded to approve the twenty twenty five. Twenty twenty seven biennial, Hardy County Biennial Plan. And the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven. Biennial measure fifty seven. The rest. Um. Agreement. Any further discussion? All favor signified of saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed? Hearing that motion carries, so, uh, these still need state level signatures on them?
Yes.
So when you get, when you get those back, please send us a copy so that we can archive them.
And that usually, that also goes to Vani Jo, right?
Um, I. Maybe the agreement.
Okay.
Um. I don't know, check with her, ask her if she needs a copy of that or not. And I don't know if she would or not, she she knows where it goes, but I don't know for her records if she needs it or not.
Okay.
Okay, next topic, anything else, I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
Alright, thank you, uh, next topic, Parks and Rec. Randy.
Morning, guys. Um, I'm Randy from Hides and Recreation, most of you guys know me, um, as a district manager. Um, a letter was recently sent by email to you guys about audit, so I'm going to take them to. Um, kind of explain the recent audit letter and that I have also been in contact with maybe for a couple of months. This has been ongoing, um, and then after that, I'll give you guys just like a quick, um, what's new? What's park and what we've been doing. So, um. When I stepped into the role as district manager for head of the park recreation, I inherited organizations faced some significance. Management challenges, to say the least. Um, one of the major issues was that the audits have not been completed since two thousand sixteen. I stepped down in two thousand twenty two. Um, Oster's professional group did start, um, taking and board, um, taking and starting getting audits done and completed. A lot of boxes were defined. It's kind of been a mess, we've just been trying to put together a piece of what we can to get through audits. Um. Now we are up to two thousand two, two thousand, or two thousand twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. And since that's all stuff that when I took over, it's all ready to go. Um, we do have a new, um, person that's came in and is auditing us right now, they took over this spring. Um, we faced some setbacks because we lost our auditor at John Day. Um, so, um. Now we are at the two thousand twenty two audits, it is almost complete when Kara goes in. And checks on it, they send her stuff through the emails, it literally says ninety percent complete. I think they just have a couple of boxes left to check with us, which is the mandatory, um, questions that they asked us and that's all we have left. And then we will have, and we are still actively working on twenty three and twenty four. Again, a lot of those survey questions, they have all the paperwork from us, so unfortunately our hands are tied and we're kind of at the mercy of our auditor. Um. We've made consistent progress, we want to let everybody know that we do want to commit to full transparency and compliance moving forward. That is our full plan. Um. Do you guys have any questions audit wise?
Um. I spoke to the auditors while they were here and. Um, I think they reached out to the.
Team.
The department revenue and should have that issue cleared up on your, on that letter. As they were talking about if we weren't gonna file, then did we as the county court want to dissolve? It's that that district. But. There's a. Communication gap there somewhere, but obviously that's not the case, uh, it's like.
Like I said, it's been, it's been a crazy last three and a half years that I've been there, just the money we've spent trying to get caught up. So it'll be nice, since we got caught up, to have that money back. To be able to continue saving, right now we have about fifty thousand dollars saved to start towards programs. Um. Now I want to just do like a full update, most of you guys have probably been able to physically see most of the update happening down there. Um. About three and a half years ago, we did a long awaited facility upgrade, um, and we completely fully replaced all the solar panels. And that was a important step, you know, for, um, efficiency levels down at the pool. It really takes a lot off how much we spend on propane every year. Um. We have some major grant accomplishments that I kind of want to go over with you guys, you guys have seen the bath and shower house revitalization. We received four hundred and sixty five thousand dollars to upgrade and enhance these key amenities. Um, tennis court rehabilitation, that was completed this spring. And that was almost a hundred thousand dollars. Um, that I did down there, um, through improve the courts, put in ADA accessibility into the courts. Um, and then an ADA accessibility walkway from the courts to the ADA outdoor accessibility bathroom. That we put in, so, um, these are all state requirements because we are a state park. And so within so many years, we have to be ADA compliant down there, following or they will shut us down. Um. And then we have an upcoming grants, um, we were selected this year for forty five thousand dollars and that's earmarked for a new boiler. Yay, if you guys even know, we went through down there without a boiler, it's insane, but we do have to keep that full heated. Because we do offer, um, little kids swim lessons with a state law and the same, that we are a competitive pool and we do host swim meets. So. Um, and then we also have an ADA lift upgrade that'll be coming, um, out on the deck, also next spring, so. Um, I just want to go over additional community partner contributions, um, Roundhouse has supported us with ten thousand dollars in grants. Um, High Country Health and Wellness Center has in the last couple of years partnered with us forty five thousand dollars worth of work. Um, a lot. Going towards pool work, um, updating our sand tank, getting it cleaned out, things like that. Um, the city of Heinz has worked with us over the last past couple of years, um, and that's toward eight thousand. And the city of Burns has given us five thousand dollars in the last couple of years. Um, but we also, I just want to make this clear that we had a fully donated move electronical sign that was put in down there. Um, Alan's repair designed and cut the whole entire thing, put everything together to me, all I had to do was give them the electronic boards that were donated by us to the Heinz. Um. Right now we're doing a fundraising. Um, you guys have probably seen the little postcards that went out to Olive Harley County, the metal fish fundraiser is what we're calling it. Um, we're able to raise ninety two hundred dollars, almost going up to ninety three hundred, we've had some more fish sold this summer. Um, that's a grant match towards the grant that I just received for the new boiler. Um. And then looking ahead, um, currently we are still collaborating with High Country Health and Wellness Center to explore, uh, new grant opportunities. Keep that collaboration working together with us, um, and we are right smack dab in the middle of strategic planning. Um, we're excited, um, about the progress that we've made in the last three and a half years and. You know, we're making great strides, uh, for pool enhancements. For in the future. We just want to be completely transparent with everybody on where money's going, what our new future goals are going to be. So the last thing that I have down there is the pool. So I can work on getting that a little bit, so as I said, I have fifty thousand dollars saved. So that we can start looking into grant opportunities for a new pool.
A a complete new pool?
A complete new pool, no cover, we can't have covers on it, that's a rule down there, but a complete new.
Is that, no covers, is is that a state rule or?
Well, there's two rules, so one, it's out there, um, it is all earmarked as outdoor recreational only. And two, yes, the water conservation park is saying, no, we cannot cover. It's a written laws and a book, um. Unless, and we don't fall into this because unfortunately in the month of June. Our weather fluctuates so much, we can hit fifty degrees and we can hit ninety degrees. But we need to level out at a low, I think it's at sixty eight degrees to be even be considered. At letting us have just an outdoor number over the pool.
Randy, um. Do you have a good board? You have a pretty strong board right now or?
I do.
Okay.
It is all women, um, but yes, we do have a pretty strong board, they're very involved, um, they work with me on everything. Uh, we've all been along with the glass, so I believe I do, yes.
And then, um. I'm not sure if Judge Hart was on the court then, I don't think he was, uh, and nor Commissioner Frank, but the county did. Give you quite a bit of money some years back to help with. The whole project of renovating.
There were some ARPA funds that went towards the solar panel replacement.
Yes, so forty five thousand dollars went to, I think we had like hundred and twenty thousand, forty five thousand went directly to solar. Um, there's placement and that was, um. Commissioner Schumann, I put that in there as they had to be spent that way. And then, um, the rest of it was a grant match for the, uh, four hundred and sixty five thousand dollar object that we did.
Yeah, so. Yeah. Just want you to know that. We did what we could when we had money.
You focused quite a bit on the pool in that area during your update, but could you highlight some of the other things that Parks and Rec? Does throughout the year, just.
With the sports and.
Yeah, and the father daughter dance and the skate nights.
So, um, since I started and it was something that we did here when I was a kid, so I restarted skate nights, um, the. They're not here anymore, but Girl Scouts donate all skates so that we could restart that, um, which was amazing. So we've been doing that for three years, I have two steady parents that. Show up at every single skate night, they volunteer their time to help me run concessions, run kids, get kids in and out of the doors, keep everything safe. Um, I do put on event the father daughter dance every year also, that is a huge hit. Um, we can range anywhere from eighty to a hundred couples there at this event, we're almost at growing our venue. I don't know where I'm moving, they provide dinner, um, and they, they're able to work with me on everything, so we're probably trying to keep it there. Um, at the Alps.
At the Alps.
Yep, um, and then all the sports, I've had a lot of things brought back to me, I don't know if you guys know this, but, um. Some sports got up and kind of walked away and they started their own leagues, um, Little League was one of them, Russell is one of them. Uh, swim team was one of them, swim team has been brought back, um, rotating that back over again. Youth football, um, was brought to me, they were started on their own as a league, um, so now I run youth football. This year we, um, put in flag football, so we have flag and tackle. Um, we run soccer and volleyball and basketball, um, all things. Uh, we have brought back tennis. Tennis was something that kind of died out, it's something that we really want to get these kids instilled back in, so we run a tennis camp. And we run, um. Actual kids tennis and this goes all the way through high school since the high school kids don't have tennis. And so it's open from like second grade till eighteen year olds, um. And we've had our tennis sports completely redone, um, the amount of people that we have out there now because they are both lined for tennis and pickleball. The lights are on, I have cameras down there, I can see people down there till ten o'clock at night, and it's been amazing.
Ah, cool. Good job.
Yeah. I have to honestly say, I didn't realize, I mean, the pool obviously, but I didn't know all the other events and all the other activities that you're involved with, that's great.
Yes. A one man band.
Yeah.
With volunteers. That's kind of how we've been running it. Seems to be successful.
What's, what's the age for the father daughter dance?
Um, it's literally from. One, zero, how, whatever age they want to show up until eighteen.
Until eighteen.
And Rob's been to many, they're a huge hit.
Uh, they are very well put on, they're not well received by my daughter and I don't know if she'll accept my invite in the future.
I'll do it the exact same way.
Is that what it takes, father supposed to invite the daughter?
Well, yeah, I kind of think it's a good, a good chance to set them up and show them how gentlemen should treat them, so formally ask them on a date. And that was all fine and dandy the first year and then the second year she said, why, we went last year.
Well, I. I still have a daughter within age group and I was waiting on an invite, never got one, so I guess I'll make the invite this year.
Yeah. Yeah, it's good for them, it's a good time. No DJ and pictures. Thanks.
Thank you very much, yeah. Thank you very much. Yeah, great addition to our community. Thank you. And um as I've mentioned before, along the way for grants or anything, any letters of support that we can give as a county court or whatever. Please don't hesitate to ask us.
Yes, of course. I'm very interested with um Commissioner Doro and the economic rules. I mean, maybe Park and Rec can partake some grant funding or the option of help with grant funding. Just for the pool. Um we had a huge crack this year. We had, you guys know the whole level of the underground water system right now. But there's so much water. I dumped the pool because we have to legally dump it every year and clean it with neurotic acid. That's the law. Um when I did that, the pool cracked and there's a huge line down the twelve foot. Um it was spraying water in my face and I freaked, called my husband. He was like, you have to get down here right now. I don't even know what to do. Um probably the fastest this pool's ever been cleaned and we started at nine o'clock in the morning. We called down the Reese's. Um we called down the Heinz fire department. They brought fire trucks. We were in there cleaning. We had everything cleaned, painted. Attempted to hydraulic cemented because that's a water scene that you can use, did not work. Um I am losing water like absolute mad into this crack and it is getting bigger. It's gotten so much bigger. It was just this tiny thing. Slither and now it's got to be three inches. And I got to dump it again. We're looking at approving at our next meeting. Um have fix it and repaint the pool. So the whole pool has to be repainted to be able to seal the whole thing back down in there.
So I periodically get notifications from Oregon State Parks on grant opportunities. Usually it's for the acquisition of of land or the development of camping type of stuff. Um so are you, you mentioned that that the pool is technically a state park?
A water conservation park.
A water, okay. I might, I'll, I'm gonna, I'll make contact with them and find out if there's other types of grants that they, that we might be able to tap into.
Um I've tech, I just became a member of the National Park and Rec District also. Um I also have one more. Um national thing that I'm looking at trying to, but when you become members of those people, they open up doors for grant opportunities too. And so I'm trying to look into all of that as well. This is going to be a huge project. We're looking at millions of dollars. The whole deck has to be replaced. We have to get everything back up to complacency. I mean, when I tell you guys, like you guys were talking about how old our jail is. Our pool is probably one of the oldest pools left operating in um the whole city of Oregon. It's us and Prankville. We're the only two that haven't been updated. And Prankville can't get a levy. I'm not even going to attempt to get a levy here. I know that it's just going to fail. Um. The thing that we are looking at and we've added hopefully into strategic planning is um. When it was started back in sixty-nine, they only outlined our taxing district through the cities. Not the county or expanded even out by the airport. We are literally, we're around the cities. It's pretty small. I think that it's time to actually step up and maybe expand that. Um especially now that we're offering, I've partnered with E S D. They have a grant they get every year for rural kids coming in and have free swim lessons. So I have rural kids coming in using the pool. I don't think that I'm out on a ledge here even asking for us to start into that as well.
Yeah.
A boundary change for sure.
Well, and even your, your swim team, do you get in the summertime? Do you get crane or or other rural? Families for swim?
Well, if it is, no, but this year, I can't even tell you. It was amazing. Um the only sport that I've actually watched grow this immensely in the last couple of years, and especially since we've taken it over. We generally have about forty kids. This year we had sixty-three kids on our swim team. We had a lot of district champions. Um to my daughter, her best friend, all the Reese's kids go back. Um Campbell kids and we were all district champions. So I think we have a great swim team coming up.
I'm gonna also put a, kind of put a bug out there uh for G E O D C, Greater Eastern Oregon Development. Um and have them keep their eyes open for recreational type grants.
Sounds great. Thank you.
See what we can't find there. Biggest part of grants a lot of times is. You could have a catalog and it'd be bigger than the phone book or the Yellow Pages because there's so many out there. And if you don't have somebody in tune to. To what's available, it's hard to apply and apply in time and.
Yes, and like I said, I'm a one-man band.
Yeah.
I ride in the grains. I'm monitoring them. I'm reporting them on top of running all the sports, on top of running the pool. On top of finding and hiring lifeguards, training all my lifeguards. I do all of those. So it's a lot.
All right, and you know that pool, uh in addition to the the things like the swimming team and the lessons. That is a safe place for kids who don't have that strong supervision and protection. From their home life to be in the summer during the day and. Uh that that's something I just feel strongly about.
As much as provided down there.
We're happy. See, I mean, it is, it's a real good thing.
You have any uh historic pictures of the pool there in Harley County, i.e. the Heinz pool, the old Heinz pool?
I don't have any of that stuff. I don't even have blueprints. So the pool that I have down there, I've been in here to the county and they're like, we don't have anything. I'm like, oh, that's great for me and Dale because when we work on plumbing stuff, we don't know where anything's at because there's not blueprints.
Uh dating myself, the reason I just was asking dating myself, I. Just oh so vaguely remember going to the old Heinz pool out, out to, out by the mill.
Yes.
Out there.
Yep.
If I want to say, it seems like it was heated geothermally or something.
Yes, through the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we can still see the hole in the ground where it used to be.
Yeah.
Well, we're lucky to have you in that position because you've done incredible amount, but I'm glad you put it on our horizon about millions of dollars needed for the pool. It wasn't on my horizon before.
How fast do you think you're losing water through that crack?
Oh, pretty fast.
How many gallons do you think? How often do you have to refill? I'm just wondering how many acre feet it is recharging the ogre for with. Because I mean.
Awesome. It's going right back into our ground because there's no sand left underneath, so the groundwater's going back. But um. I have to refill it every day and I have to wait about just for every single day. I went on vacation for Labor Day, took my son camping first, but they, when I came back yesterday, it took me four and a half hours to refill it.
Looking at groundwater recharge.
The things, it's, you know, twelve, thirteen feet in the ground. If it's in a water static valve, so I mean, it's, it's can't be going too far, but yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for coming in and giving us update. It's very worthwhile. Thank you. Yes. Next topic, uh transient lodging tax discussion. Transient lodging tax was, was brought before the voters in twenty-two, the last time.
Yeah, the last time. There was a time twice since I've been on the court since two thousand seventeen. It has been.
So I would like to, it has to be done during a a general primary season, election season. Um so I would like to, and I've gotten the the documents from the last time from the clerk. Um but I'd like to put it, have it put on our, on our ballot again in May.
One of the things that I think.
Or I would like to propose and put it on the ballot.
Um I mean, I I would love to see it because I really don't think the addition of additional amount of money. That uh would go on to a hotel bill, which, I mean, nobody likes more to pay more in taxes anywhere. But nevertheless, um. One perspective is some of the hotel owners believe that it deters people from staying here and using their facility because. Extra money, so they'll just drive on to Ontario or drive on to Bend instead of staying here. But truly, I mean, you're going to find those fees anywhere you go. And if someone needs to stay overnight here because this is where they need to be or they don't want to drive that extra hour or two. To stay somewhere else, they're going to stay here. That, so I feel like the hotel owners, the motel owners. Are are key to helping generate support or at least to counter the argument that blew up on Facebook. Last time, you know, you know, you know how things do. People get real um emotional and real. Name-calling on on all the things they express and and I, it was sad to see that. I I just don't know, again, the the word transient, you know, we've always had to fight against that. People think it means transient people in your community. They don't read past it. They don't understand. But much like school district three, as they, as they moved toward trying to um see if the community will support a levy, school bond. You know, education to the people, lots of conversation, lots of patient conversation and educating one another. And then the, they vote as they will, but I would, that, that was not there in the last two times. Um enough apparently.
And I make a comment to that also. So I saw this on the agenda and I wanted to say purposely for this um. Commissioner Doro, where you're going, I a hundred percent I agree with that. I think there was a lot of misinformation. Or just assumptions because there wasn't public education out there. I've heard a mix of, yes, it's about the homeless or, oh, we're not going to pay that. Or why should my family pay that? But really, when we go to Bend, right? They have a Bend city tax on the room. They have a Deschutes County tax on the room. That doesn't deter us from staying in Bend or anywhere else in the state. And the other kind of comment to this, um just from the sheriff's office standpoint, is over ninety percent of search and rescue missions. Are from people passing through. And I believe part of this transient stuff goes back to public safety. I think there's a small portion of it. And I think that would help offset that. And if there's an education piece that goes out there to the public, just kind of showing like, hey, look, here's what you pay when you go to Bend. Here's what you pay when you go to Ontario, Portland, just throw, throw it out there for people to see. I think they'll come around um and trying to explain that transient piece of it as well.
I agree.
So there were, there were um, there were three mindsets, as mentioned by Commissioner Dora. There were three mindsets. First, it's transient lodging tax. First thing people heard transient and they thought. Transient relocation from Portland to Harley County.
And that was.
And that's not it. It's about, it's tourism. It's not transient. It's tourism. We, um the state obviously has placed that title on it as transient lodging tax. And it's really a tourism tax is what it really is. But the next word that people heard was tax. And I don't blame people. I don't want to pay any more taxes either, but this is not a tax on our local community or the people in our community. This is a tax on tourism, on people transiting through our community that utilize our services such as public safety. Or medical or or, you know, whatever that might be. Then that's a tax on them that they pay. To help provide those services to people that come and visit. And and whether that's, whether that's just transient. People that are transiting through our community um on an overnight stay as they progress east or west or whatever. Or whether that's people that come for an event, whether it be the rodeo or or the bird festival or any other thing. They're here and we have to provide services for those people when they're here. If they, if they're me- have medical needs or or search and rescue law enforcement needs, we have to provide those services. The next mi- uh mindset on it was the, there was a few vendors, a few uh lodging vendors that thought that they would lose out on money on it. But again, it's, it's, you're going to pay that sa- and I think the average was like six dollars. I think the last time around, it was about six dollars a night is what it equated to per night in transient lodging tax.
The fees were going to be more upward down the road to the next hotel.
Yeah, it was like, so you, you're going to pay that six dollars in Harley County as you're transiting two hours east to two hours west. Or you're going to pay it six dollars at the end of that two-hour travel. You're, they're going to pay it either way because counties on both sides of us. Have city and county lodging taxes. Um i- it's definitely my intent that we do more outreach on this and more education on this if we put it on the ballot again. Um but those are the three things we have to get around and people have to understand those three elements of this, of this effort. And the, the, the split is seventy thirty, is seventy percent towards economic development and thirty percent, I think, towards just general services. But a lot of places end up using in public safety.
And and I remember at least one of the times when we made some potential decision is where, should it pass, where that money would go. From the tourism side, we, economic development tourism side, we were going to invest. It into the fairgrounds and a little bit for the Harley County Western History Room, i.e. That is a very unique thing in the state and if that could help pay to keep that whole. And good, then there would be, you know, more of the general fund for regular petaliberi and then search and rescue. Very much search and rescue. Those were all good things to to put the money toward, to benefit the whole county in my opinion. But now again, there can be discussion on on. What we think would be a good way to budget that money should, should it pass.
Yeah. The first hurdle is, is getting it to pass. Once, once it's, I mean, people want to know where the money's going to go so we can have a general. A general statement of 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 where it can go to. Um but as far as dollar for dollar where it goes to, we can have those discussions later, I think.
I just wanted to share what I remember about it.
I said, or roads, or county roads.
Can I, can I say something? I, I used to work out at French Glen at the hotel and we charged that tax. Where did that money go?
You charge a county lodging tax?
We charge lodging tax.
You probably did a state tax.
Because it was part of the, it is part of the state.
Right.
But.
We, we don't have a county lodging tax, so it.
Right, I understand. So it was, I'll, I'll look into it.
Cause there's Burnt, that Burns has City of Burns one, Heinz has City of Heinz, and then there's state, but we don't have a county one. Yeah, if you find out.
You know, have a dollar or something a night or whatever.
Yeah.
So, so this would encompass the entire county and it would capture, um, uh there's a. I think there's three, three rooms down at Fields. There's, you know, a few rooms at French Glen. There's Crystal Crane Hot Springs. Um and then all the other facilities in town as well.
Page Springs.
Yeah. So um I think.
Just as a reminder, I'm going to need to leave in about seven or eight minutes.
We're gonna um, so I needed to get this and get, you know, make sure if that's what the court was in in a grant to get this on the ballot or not. Because we're coming up against filing deadlines and whatever to get this done. So um again, I don't know if we need a motion or not, but I'd like to make a motion. To uh again, put forth um a ballot measure for a transient lodging, Harley County transient lodging tax.
Second.
An emotion's been made and seconded to put forth a ballot measure uh to establish Harley County transient lodging tax. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And oppose, hearing that motion carries. Um next topic, property value appeals board. Every year we have to appoint uh members of the court and volunteers to the property values appeal board. Um so order of appointment. Uh in the matter of appointing a pool of members for the Harley County Property Value Appeals Board, P V A. And in this year, um. Uh it is so ordered that William, William J. Hart, Mary P. Doro and Robert Frank. Be appointed members of the chairperson's pool for Harley County Board of Property Value Appeals Board. Uh the term shall begin September third and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Their su- uh successors be appointed by Harley County Court and it is ordered that Julie. And I know I'm going to say this wrong, but. Spekar?
Spekar.
Uh Mark Wilbury and Amaya. Do that in Spanish. It would be uh Payoda, uh Paloda. Sorry, out there. I'm butchering somebody's name. Uh be appointed members of the non-office holding pool for the Harley County Property Values Appeals Board. Um I've done this the last three years. I would intend to probably be the primary, but you know. Uh in case something comes up, we would need another chairperson to, to take that seat. Unless one of you just really would like to do it, I would be more than happy to turn it over. Regardless, the, the three of us are in that pool. So that's what this uh uh order of appointment is in regards to. And this is when somebody basically appeals their property taxes.
I move to approve the order of appointment in the matter of appointing a pool of members for the Harley County Property Value Appeals Board. With the uh elected officials of William J. Hart, Mary P. Doro and Robert Frank. And with the non-elected appointees being Julie Spekar, Mark Woodbury and Amaya Paletta. Palata, uh, yeah.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve order of. Motion's been made and seconded to approve order of appointment in the matter of. Uh, appointing a pool of members for the Harney County Property Value Appeals Board as read. Any further discussion? All favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, and opposed? Hearing that motion carries.
What are we gonna do about this noon hearing for the supplemental budget? Commissioner Doro's gonna take off to another meeting.
Um, so. She has another meeting to go to. Um, I figured we would just continue to have, have us, we have a court. And um. It's, you know, you have to have a public hearing with budget, supplemental budget, have to have a public hearing. Anybody shows up? Have comment on it? I'm gonna ca- take that comment. Move forward. Uh, next topic then, if we can run it in here real quick, like it's Harney Basin alternative rules. This is the. That's from the, the supplemental budget.
Alright, real, real quick, like. There, there have been some people meeting and discussing. Uh, proposing an alternative to the. Raffi told rulemaking process to compose rule that came out with. And basically what it looks like right now is that it would, it would limit the curtailments to the. Areas that are problem areas, Weaver Springs and Dog Mountain, Northeast Crane. But with the way that is written that I sent out to you, it also includes Lower Blitzen in the critical groundwater area, which. I don't agree with that. I think there's gonna be a meeting tomorrow. With some of the landowners and the, the stakeholders to discuss. That plan, but the reason I wanted to bring it up for discussion is because. They have talked about the potential of the Harney County Court being a petitioner and. One of the petitioners for this plan. And I am unclear on what the timeline is. I think we have ninety days. Maybe from when O W R D came out with their proposed rule. And so if we were gonna consider taking on that responsibility of being a petitioner, I think we need to make sure that the plan. Is just like we like. And for me reading through it, it does address the municipalities, which I think is important. If you read through that. Long forward, the tribe expressed some concerns and wants to have some things explicitly spelled out. About how the tribe is affected, but I feel that in part that is redundant because the tribe has sovereignty. And state law isn't gonna trump that. And there was also mention in there about them being co-chairs with O W R D. Or an advisory committee, which I'm not in agreeance with because we as a, as a governing body, we need to be involved in that process as well. I agree that the hotspots should be curtailed. Tomorrow, if that's when we end up having this meeting, I will probably still champion for not having lower blitz and included because they are not in a deficit. And Silver Creek and Silvies. They're on the verge of being in a deficit and I think they can justify regulation there, but I think. An emphasis on voluntary agreements rather than curtailment is good. That's kind of a hard line for me. I know I've been stinker about it all along, but I don't think the southern region. Which is lower blitz and should be included as they are out of surplus for groundwater.
So, do you think, I think I saw in that email that like September eighth or something, something coming up real soon. This uh proposed petition, is that what this is being proposed as? Would be getting submitted in just a few days. So at least in regard to that, as well as the court's role. Um, what are you proposing as far as whether we need to call an emergency session of the county court to, to do something between now and then?
I'll have to find out what the timeline's gonna be, because I don't think they can do that by the eleventh and twelfth. The twelfth, I think is when they're gonna do that proposed rule in matters or in Water Resource Commission.
Um, I'm gonna have to excuse myself here. Um, so I'll stand by for whatever. You guys, things we need to do. I mean, you're all week, just hope you are.
Okay.
Um.
Real quick, like, um, our September seventeenth next county court session, um. I've got the O-Tech Economic Summit to go to on that day.
Mm-hmm.
And I think Commissioner Frank had something on that day.
Yes, sir.
So how does your schedules look for the eighteenth?
Probably gone the eighteenth.
We're gone the eighteenth. Um. Uh, when does it look good for you guys to, to reschedule the seventeenth? What's your?
I mean, I have a lot of openings. I have something like noon on the sixteenth, but the rest of the day is open. What other days are you proposing? Um, and you can zoom in if you need to, um, all of us have needed.
I'm, I'm open on the sixteenth. Um, but I will say I was gonna propose an executive session. The next time we have county court and um, to confer with county council, it is not available on the sixteenth.
Well, I'm, I'm available on the nineteenth. I'm available on the. Fifteenth.
My nineteenth is wide, wide open.
When are you coming back?
Fifteenth is wide open, but again, I don't think county council will be available on the fifteenth.
Probably, probably the night of the eighteen, I'll come back. I should be back by the nineteenth and I would be available after ten A M.
I'd have to do it after ten A M on the nineteenth as well.
Um, do we wanna push it to the following week? Twenty second?
Hmm, there, I may be unavailable the twenty second. Twenty third, I think I'm available. The twenty fourth is a refuge C C P meeting.
Twenty thirty, you'd have to be in the afternoon for me.
Well, nineteenth.
Let's start for the nineteenth.
Yeah, I think he's available on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Um, eighteenth, I think was his earliest availability. Um, okay, so nineteenth at regular time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you want to do your executive session or?
Oh. On the nineteenth, I don't think I'll be available until after ten. So if I can be excused from the voucher approval, I can probably be here by ten.
Okay.
Or.
You can take care of vouchers later if you wanted to or need to.
Okay.
You don't have to reveal on here and.
One, one of the things in the packet today was just to let you know, um. I received presidential appointments by the president of the National Association of Counties to two, two uh. Councils or committees, the Rural Action Caucus and the Veterans and Military Services Advisory Council. I did not apply this year. Um, in the past, I have applied for certain things. Uh, and it's because of my many years of, of being active in these things. So I will represent well and I'm happy to do it, so. Just let me know that.
Real, real quick, like comments on these alternative promos, proposed uh rules. Um, section. Exhibit A.
If you have thoughts about payment and lower taxes. If you wanna shoot an email, if you have any insights or thoughts or comments about that.
You can get, I've tried to go online to see the historical amounts for Harney County and it only goes back so far. It takes a while, but I'm sure if you call or contact their office, they can probably generate. The main thing is our amount in real dollars of today's dollars is just insufficient. It's just insufficient period by a long shot.
So, um, in exhibit A, uh, under six nine zero dash five one two and whatever. However, that would be the rule numbers or whatever. It speaks to the municipal. I know you mentioned that already, but I wanna specifically say. Um, and. Now, so. Subparagraph. Or I got so many As and Bs and everything going on here. Uh, subparagraph four. G. I don't know, four I. Um, it says the following groundwater, the following groundwater uses are exempt from cor-. From corrective control orders under this critical groundwater area designation. Uh, and those being exempt groundwater use, municipal and quasi municipal groundwater rights. Geothermal uses, recreational groundwater rights, groundwater rights held by federally recognized Indian tribes in Harney Basin. Um, and then sub, subparagraph after that. As long as, and I, and I don't think Burns and Heinz, you know, they have, I don't know what their total uh water right is. But the, under the proposed rules, it's gonna cut them to the bone. And that'll affect our community economic development, housing and everything else. So as long as that is an element in these. Are considered and as a part of these um, alternative proposals, then I would be on board with it. But, but Burns and Heinz. I mean, you know, they might take a little bit of cut or ten percent or whatever, twenty percent or whatever that looks like. I don't think would kill us. In economic development, but at the proposed rate that's on the table right now. It will cut us to the bone so deep that we won't, we won't see any development here.
Well, the other, the other thing is both of those municipalities are within the subarea that is right on the borderline. And, and really isn't even triggering. Technically based on a few of the things. They could regulate, but the only way they can regulate for all the subbasins in the basin. Is if they tie them all together and say they're all one shared reservoir. And so those two are both in the Silvies sub-basin. Which is not overdrawn to the extent of some of the others. And I think that's a. I think that's a pretty easy line in the sand to say they need to be omitted.
Yeah.
Consideration.
So as long as that verbiage is, is maintained, or at least something not as drastic as what their original proposed wo- rules were, then I would be. I would be in, in a favor of that.
Okay. I wish I had more information, so it could have been a more constructive conversation, but it's a quickly evolving, fast-moving target, so.
So at this time, um, I'm going to uh recess county court and adjourn or um. And then, um. Uh, supplemental budget hearing. So it is proposed that, um. Supplemental budget be, is, is the treasurer still in by ten?
I'm not back.
Good. Um. Be resolved, the county court, Harney County hereby adopts a supplemental budget presented at the supplemental budget hearing held at twelve P M noon. On September third, twenty twenty five, in the total sum of a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Now on file at the office of the Harney County Clerk. Be resolved that the additional amount for the fiscal year. Um, and this is in regards to uh Public Health R H C, I'm sorry, Fund Two Forty Five. Uh, be resolved that the additional amount for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty five, and the categorical purposes shown below. Are hereby appointed appropriated as follows. Public Health R H C Fund Two Forty Five Materials and Supplies. Uh, increased to two hu- seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, an increase of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, this came, she's gone, I take it. Um. Well, the increases are in materials and supplies and the revenue came from. From a revised uh projected ending fund balance. Wherein, at the end of the year, each year, we make the best guess possible as to what the ending fund balances or beginning fund balance is gonna be. Um. Sometimes that's hard to tell based on what's still coming in and what's going out still. All the supporting documentation with the resolution is just that the increased lines where the funds will go to.
So they've generated more revenue than they anticipated and it needs to be.
They need to have it appropriated.
Appropriated.
So, so that they can uh expand it. I- if, if they didn't have in the lines that they've identified for it to go to, if they didn't have need for it in those lines, they could just let it set. In the beginning fund balance and we could then appropriate it next year. But they have found need for that, for those funds, so we have to appropriate it.
Do we have a minimum amount of time we have to leave the budget hearing open or what steps do we take?
It doesn't say all I was, all I do next step basically would be to open it up for public comment. So at this time, I will open it up for public comment. Any public comment?
No, I came here specifically for this and, and I'm just, I'm just observing the process. I had no comment.
Okay. Um, so again, if it, if it wasn't needed to be spent, we could just leave it in. In the beginning fund balance and appropriate it next year. But there is need for it, so we have to appropriate it. And the rule is that anything over ten percent of the, of the current expenditures, we can spend up to ten percent more. Than what is currently um budgeted, appropriated. If you go over the ten percent, then you have to do a supplemental budget. We could do. If it's under that, we can do it by resolution uh only. Um, wherein it's over that, so we have to do a supplemental budget process. A part of the supplemental budget process is public hearing, specific advertised on specific date.
Just out of curiosity, do you know what kinds of things would be included in professional services?
Um. Which line is that?
Hmm, two four five dash five dash zero four five three four three one.
What was, I'm sorry, it expenditure, five line?
Uh, yes.
And what were the last four?
Three, four, three, one.
Oh, it's one they got highlighted. Um. I'll give you a list of things that it's normally spent out of that line. If we can connect. Tyler hasn't completely switched over, has it? So historically, out of that, and they're gonna have all kinds of. Different things probably over there, but Oregon Coalition of Local Health, State Public Health Lab. Um. Like the Visa Card Charge, Oregon State Public Health, I E S. Like the Visa Card Charge, Oregon State Public Health, I E S Communications. Which would be their security system over there. Meadow Outdoor Advertising. That's probably gonna be the billboard or, or a. Highway Board. Control Solutions. So it looks like there's a myriad of different things for professional services that they're billing to. Waste Pro for shredding services. Arnie County Planning, because they're helping to fund outreach as it relates to uh public health. In the Environmental Services. Department. High Desert Parks and Rec, and that's part of what uh Brandy was speaking to, partnership with. High Desert Medical. Um, so un- under these grants, obviously, and. And different elements and things that they can build. They could build to or build for.
I was just curious, they, they have generated more revenue than was forecasted, and if they think that they can provide. Enhanced services by increasing those. Budget expenditures, then I am in favor of it, so I would move. To approve resolution twenty twenty five dash nineteen in the matter of adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations. Public Health R H C Fund Two Forty Five.
And I will second, and for the record, uh Commissioner Dorrell. Um, had to step out for conflict, so um present for this budget hearing is myself and Commissioner Frank. Any further discussion or motion has been made and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash nineteen in the matter of adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations. For Public Health R H C Fund Two Forty Five. And the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, increasing materials and supplies to seven hundred and sixty two thousand, two hundred and eighty five dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Alright.
Aye? And opposed? Hearing done, motion carries. Alright, so that'll take care of that, and we shall adjourn the special. Supplemental budget hearing and reconvene regular county court session. With a few items left to take care of. Correspondence, I don't have any correspondence, do you have any?
No, I did not.
Scheduling, we already talked about the court. Date for uh September nineteenth. Regular time, um you'll be in at ten o'clock.
Yes.
Uh, any other meetings of note?
Note, we already talked about the Water Commission meeting, which takes place the eleventh and twelfth, I think the twelfth. Is when they're gonna talk about Harney County issues, the community based water. Planning, integrated plan, and they will present the proposed rules from the RAC five twelve process to them. And I am under the impression that they will not receive any public comment during that meeting at all.
No more than what's already been submitted by.
Right. Other than that, I don't see any, any other meetings.
So I just received. Email notification this morning. The um. Act, which is the Area Commission on Transportation. Meeting. And I'm way behind on my emails after being out, but I wanna say it was set for October second. And that'll be in Salem, and I normally attend that, um, just as representative. You know, it's kind of the next level up from the C Act, the Southeast Area Commission on Transportation. Past couple of years, to be honest, I've been a little frustrated with them, that, that it seems to be kind of Portland Metro centric in those meetings. Um, and I'm not the only one that feels that way, but uh they control the agenda and we speak up where we can. Um, obviously this year with the budget issues and everything, it might be, it might be a pretty good meeting. It's not, it's not over ODOT, it's the, it's the commission, it's the transportation commissioners. State of Oregon, so, but they have input on projects and.
Do they have any authority or jurisdiction over the Department of Transportation?
No, it's really. To my understanding, it's really more of a. I've had advisory of a. Comment type of a group, you know, that, that um, I think they do sway, you know, projects. Whether it's big I five quarter projects or. Wh- whatever it might be, but I don't, they don't have any direct say so as to using this project or that project or.
That's interesting because I could be mistaken, but I think. If, for example, the Oregon Water Resource Commission wanted to conduct an audit of that agency. I think they are the only ones besides the governor that actually have the authority to. To hold them accountable.
Of ODOT?
Of O W R D, and I, I thought that every agency had a similar commission, you know, the Fish and Wildlife. Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife has Wildlife Commission. I thought that was, other than the governor's office, the administrative branch, I thought that was the only entity that could. Hold them accountable.
I'll do some research. I'm, I'm not, I can't say a hundred percent. You know, so let me do some research and find out exactly what they're, where they would fit into the scheme on that. To be honest with you, the last couple of years that I've been to, it felt, it, it really felt like. Why are we doing this? It felt like nothing more than a checkbox. But if I don't go at all, I mean, I hate to spend county money on travel, but if I don't go at all, then I can't complain, because I'm a. Wasn't there to try and voice where I could.
Right.
First year I went, they did a round robin and. Wasn't really prepared for what, what consisted of, so I. Winged it, and that was the year they were talking about closing the, the rest areas at Brothers and. At um. Buchanan. Buchanan. And, and you know, so I, I put input on that and talked about the vast distances between our communities and how those rest areas are vital. O'Reilly, they were talking about closing O'Reilly. Um, so I did put in, input on that, and then the next year I was ready, I had a, had a. Paragraph or so to read to them, and they didn't even do a round robin, so I'm like. But anyway, that's coming up. I think it's gonna, you know, again, with our transportation issues here in Eastern Oregon, if we don't, if we don't show up and at least speak up when we have the opportunity, then we don't have anybody to blame. Any other meetings of interest?
Meetings in D C next week, mostly to talk about payment in lieu of taxes.
Hey, I hear you can go out and eat dinner at night now.
What do you mean?
It's safe. It's safe.
I, I don't know about that, you know. You're safe, was it that unsafe before?
Well, the times, I've been to D C many, many times, uh but it's been. How, how long's it been? It's been. Twelve years, probably since the last, well. Ten years since the last time I was there, last time I went was on a, when we lived in Nevada, it was a school trip for uh fifth graders, sixth graders. And um. Well, I didn't think it was that bad then, but that's quite amount of time in twenty two. But I have, in the years that I've been to D C, I'd go out and walk around at night, didn't, didn't have any, didn't, well. Depends on the part of town you're in too, you know, like any city, but I never had any concerns about it. Um, so I don't know, that's my frame of reference to it. Have you been to D C before?
Yeah, when I was younger.
Metro's real easy to get around town on.
Sure don't like cities much.
Um, general deliberation. Anything?
Uh, few things, one thing that I thought was noteworthy was after attending a weed board meeting the other night, one of the things they discussed. Was there are lots of noxious weeds within the municipalities and there are. There are no mechanisms to do something about it if people have lots with nuisance weeds. And a big part of it's education, people don't realize that's what the problem is, and some of them are even weeds that are listed on the. I think it's List A and List B for the state, but they're, they're a big deal, so the, the weed board chair. And our county weed director are gonna try and go meet with the municipalities. And see if we can get on the same page about trying to enforce some sort of ordinances and see if they can put in for some grants that would help them facilitate that. So I thought that was a good thing.
On, on that note, while we're on, on the weed topic. Uh, they did, the municipalities, or Burns anyway, reached out here not too long ago to ask and see about if we could um. If our weed department could do spraying for them, if we could contract with the city of Burns. Um, and I spoke with the, with the director, and they used to do that, or in years past they've done it. But not everybody wants chemicals sprayed down the road right away on East E Street or Al Gore, wherever. Um, so while they're spraying, people were pretty upset about it, and while we were just doing it as a contracted service to the city of Burns. Were the ones that caught all the flack on it. Um, so I think the director said he would be more than willing to help train and facilitate in any way he could, but. But he didn't want us as the county to do it. You know, whether they start their own weed program or, or whatever.
Hmm, that's gonna be a tough one, I, I get it, I went full on hippie and wasn't gonna spray any weeds, and then. By the end of this summer, had to, this is the only way to do them. So.
And we do have a few lots in town that next spring. Before they get to spraying anywhere, I'm gonna have to spray our foreclosure lots. Um, to control weeds. On those.
Uh, we already talked about the payment in lieu of. Taxes, and so any input or insights on that between now and then, share those. For the fair capital improvements report that we've been trying to do. The, the fair is up and going right now, they have the uprights up. The whole lean to, and that half of the roof up to the peak is roofed and. They're, they are set up for fair, and so that's exciting. One other thing that is kind of exciting is just yesterday, because of Jay Nelson, the Fair Board Member. And Dusty, who works at the fairgrounds now. The two of them got the water up and going, so that they'll have water for fair, so that's a good thing, they're expecting.
That's a, that's a losing battle. Down there, my guys were down there for a week, couple of them, um, it's. The old existing line is A B S. And that sewer pipe. And so I don't know way back when, when that was acceptable, but that was used as their water line. So maybe way back when, the water pressure wasn't that much, and A B S was acceptable. But now you're basically fixing one leak and then running over and fixing another, so. It, it's until they do something, either turn down the water pressure that they're probably getting from the city. Um, or some, something, um, there, it's, it's gonna be a losing battle until they redo the whole thing, so. I'm just happy that they got it up and going.
I thought they had in this infrastructure work, the, they're about one point three million dollars or so worth of water and sewer. And electrical and everything that was all.
Oh yeah, they're putting a bunch of new stuff in, but they're, they have to tie into existing lines and, like Eric said. They've, they've found leaks on lines that they didn't even know existed, that there was no map of, that just all of a sudden there's a wet spot in the ground.
Yeah, there's no as-built drawing of any kind, and again, you get one fixed and, and they're just, it's just splitting. I mean, it's old A B S sewer line that's got water pressure in it, and it's.
Yeah, it's not designed to hold pressure.
Anyway, my name.
Uh, I, I did wanna give a shout out to the county law enforcement. Not only our sheriff's department, but I noticed that Burns Police Department at least had people down there yesterday for the little kids' play day they do. And officers were interacting with kids, handing stuff out, helping with the events, and I thought. That was really cool for them to come down and help, but I thought it was pretty cool for those kids to get to interact with the officers and. Lottie was there and several of our sheriff's deputies, so that was a good thing. Strategic planning that we started, I have a meeting with the strategic planners. In two weeks maybe, they have been compiling the data that they got from that session, we're gonna talk about. Our next steps and schedule our next one, so that's not any big news, but it's not something we've forgotten. We'll have several more sessions to get that completed, and then the last thing, we already talked about it a little bit. But when we went around on the field trip to talk about flood mitigation measures. We looked at a couple of the alternatives that were identified in that Kleinschmidt report. And I don't think any of the alternatives as presented are probably gonna work for us, we still haven't heard back from Kleinschmidt. About their proposal to reengage and put some of that new data into that report. But we did look at their key alternatives. The, the problem with their ideal alternative, which is fully slew, is we just put a bridge in there in twenty twenty one. So the idea of doubling the width of that bridge is problematic, the idea of widening that channel. Because Department of State Lands says they have jurisdiction, which I'm still not sold on that, because. The fact of the matter is, there are no Oregon owned waters in Harney County. And so I've already reached out to legal to see how they have jurisdiction to tell us we have to get permits, and it's a little convoluted.
Well, and then. I, I can see D S L potentially having jurisdiction on the banks of the Sylvie's River itself. Cause they don't, they don't control the water, but they control the, the channel, right?
Hmm, I don't know if they should.
Well, I'm, I'm, and I'm, I agree, but at minimum, at a minimum, that's all they. How, all they uh theoretically have, so how then do they control a slew? That's not the river channel. It's an irrigation. Avenue for water. So how could they step in on that part of it?
I, and I.
I mean, at a minimum, how could they step in on that part of it?
Black for better term, I don't wanna get in a pissing match with them over it, I just am not so sure about that authority. And it's not my place to speculate about their authority on tribal lands either, but I'm not so sure about that. But their new director is coming to Harney County, maybe September twenty second, somewhere around there, and some of our. Wetlands collaborative partners are really excited because this director, according to them, is really wanting to collaborate with local jurisdictions. So. We, we'll talk about that, the other alternative that we were talking about earlier about putting a bigger box culvert in. Might be more feasible, basically, I tried to look at what are some, what's some low hanging fruit that maybe we can get some of these things done. This year before it floods again. Also not on our jurisdiction, but one of the things identified in the Kleinschmidt report was a levy on the reservation, and that's something that they are looking at. Putting into, but D S L. Might be difficult for them to work with. That would, that would protect the colony, but that's gonna push all the water east, and so it'll be good if we could.
And that's the problem I have, is that when you fix one, you're creating another issue for somebody else, so you. Put a box culvert in, even if you went to the least expensive way to put in a, um, an arch culvert or something that, you know. Doesn't need, cause anytime that you get an engineer, a consultant involved, the expense goes up. And so when you put in just a regular culvert, a series of culverts, that's something that, you know, the road department can do. But when you do that and you push wa- water from one side of. Foley Drive to the other, what's that doing to people and other places, uh, you know, it's same way with Stancliff. You know, everybody was up in arms, cut it. Put more culverts in, okay, so that floods a buoy out, that puts more pressure on that dike that Andy built. And you've never. And you've never really fixed the problem, you're just pushing water somewhere else and so you've. You know, you eliminated a problem these people getting flooded, but you're flooding other people somewhere else and that's. I guess that's the only big concern I have, you know, keep it simple, use culverts if you can. Um, an engineer's gonna want a bridge or a box culvert, sure they do, because. They wanna get their hands in there and, cause that's what it's gonna take, you're gonna take an engineering design and you're gonna have to have something that. That is given to the state of Oregon or, or put in a file in my office that says, okay, this was engineered structurally, but. You don't have to do that with the cooler, so.
Well, I kinda think, I think it's, might be getting to the point and I, I hate to rush it if we haven't seen anything new from Kleinschmidt. But there are some preferred alternatives that might be more realistic and I think we may need to look at. Some sort of a work session or something with vested interests and landowners, like the affected landowners, for example, with that one culvert. That I was talking about as an example, probably ought to talk to that landowner and make sure that's not gonna totally screw them up and. Talk to the surrounding people, now on, on those particular alternatives. They had ten sites around that northern part of the basin. And according to their modeling, it would reduce flood elevations at all ten of them, their, their two preferred alternatives. Would reduce flooding at all the locations, so it's not like it's just gonna push that problem to someone else. But still gotta talk to people that got some boots on the ground and, and know, so. I'm not sure what that's gonna look like or how soon we can move, the other thing I wanted to mention was. The city's not our jurisdiction and there, there have been talks about doing a work session with the city. Like for a waterways group or something like that, but I feel like that's another piece of low hanging fruit or a lot of those ditches. Down in the vicinity of the river, if they clean those out, to me, that seems like could be achievable before. Winter time, get those things cleaned out, cause there's culverts that have that much dirt in them, get that out, anyway.
So, again, speaking from, from my youth, um, I lived down on Riverside Drive when I was first grade. And the, the drainage ditch that comes from date, Highway twenty and date, all the way down through town, through the east side of town. Was one door down from my house and I remember as a kid that that ditch was at least that deep. Today, it's maybe two feet deep today, um, I don't know. That it's, it's a drainage system that runs all the way through and comes out at, um, Crane Buchanan. Drive Road, whatever, the, the Highway seventy eight, Crane Buchanan Road there, um. The issue this past year was just that, that drainage ditch couldn't carry enough water. To the where it got inundated and then it overfilled its banks and just spread east and west. Um, I, I don't know, I, I think they used to maintain, and the stories I've heard, they used to maintain that drainage system. Uh, the city of Burns did until the early or mid seventies and they stopped maintaining it. Which would have been about the time I lived down there when I was a kid, um. But I have a, a list of all the tax lots that that ditch runs through. And I've asked the assessor when they have time to do some research and find out if there's any pre-existing easements or anything for the city to maintain that. If the city has them, if they were in place, if they haven't been given up or anything, then it would be within the city's purview to maintain those. But, um, right now, without being able to say something, it's somebody's private property. And there are people you can drive down there and see, people have built sheds right over the top of that drainage ditch on, on stilts. There's one place I know, uh, on stilts, there's a shed that's built on stilts that comes, that goes right across the top of that ditch. Other places where it's been filled in and hasn't been cleaned out, uh, yard clippings and tree branches and who knows whatever else in there. So, in order for the city to, to, to maintain it, they're either gonna have to establish an easement or reclaim their easement.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what that, what our role in that looks like, but s- some city. Councillors have reached out more than once and said, oh, we need to do a work group about that, which is fine, but. It, that really is their jurisdiction.
I know, I agree.
The le- the other, the other thing that was brought up was there are some places in the levy, because technically it's in the national levy. Um, registry, that there's a levy that goes all the way up through there and there were some places that failed and so when we said. Like right there, the three hundred yards south of Stancliff. Right there, it came over and was coming into molds.
Yep.
So we said, well, couldn't they just build up that spot that left, you know, maybe the county's got some material or we could do something. And of course DSL said, well, we'll have to do permitting for that, uh, somebody wants to go up and stack up two feet of dirt.
Fifty yards is all you're limited to do.
Fifty yards this week and fifty yards this week.
Well, we've done that, we did that right there at Louis', um, right off of Stancliff, we went in there with material from the Smith pit. Uh, we built that up and of course, then of course, you're, you're pushing it down the line and then it's another weak point. Part of it is, is that during these times of the year, there's usually cows in there, they're going down to get water. So they make a trail and then of course, then you've got a weak one all along through there. And that seems to be the problem that you're chasing year after year before, and again, you know, it could be five, it could be ten years before you see a flood again. But it's usually the weak point of where the, the cattle have made a trail down to get water.
So you did that work, was that this year?
No, we did that probably, I guess, four or five years ago at least, on right off of, of Stancliff and that held. It was just down farther.
Yeah.
Where it didn't.
And once you get south of twenty, when they talk about the levy, we drove around there looking at it with the Corps of Engineers. And just like you were talking about with the drainage ditch, people have built right up to it, you can't even see a levy, so. I, I don't even know how it'd be feasible to try and do some levy work through there, but I.
I think cleaning it would be one, I think, I, I, if you're calling low lighting fruit. That would give the, the, the biggest bang for the buck right off the get-go is between Highway twenty and, and Highway seventy eight. Clean the Sylvie's River.
Clean the channel.
Clean the channel, now DSL's gonna get involved and they're gonna say permitting, what have you, but that is, that would be the first one, because that's the. I mean, again, I know it flows south, but that would be the, the farthest south that affects the most population. Then if you wanna back up and say, okay, now we did that, now let's back up, you know, beyond Ruthie's and beyond there. And you've got Louis' Field, let's, no, let's address that. Um, and then if Stancliff seems to be the, the hot point and the issue and it's flooding out those individuals and that water's got a place to go. By all means, let's cut the asphalt, put some more culverts in, and the same way up with, with Foley. But I, to me, it, it starts on the south end and that south end would be seventy eight to Highway twenty.
Yeah, well, the DSL talked about exemptions, but I don't, I don't know exactly what, the, the guy. Said, you know, if we can find a way to help, but the other thing is, fall time would be the time to do that. Usually there's not this much water in the river, I don't even know how you get it done. And getting down rabbit trails, I think we're gonna need to have a work session, maybe sometime towards the end of December, hopefully you could be there too. Hope, maybe we could look and, don't wanna exclude anybody, but if we could target some of those landowners that will be directly affected or have. Some historical knowledge of the water and identify if there's anything we need to ban sooner rather than later.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I agree too, I think it, it's about volume, it's about flow. You gotta open up the, the channel or the river so it can carry the water, I, I was really surprised this year that it, it. It held right there at the top of the, the river, um, and just didn't get any higher, but all the pressure was being released further up.
Oh, and those, you asked about the, if there's I-beam underneath that bridge and you hadn't gone, we went and looked and it.
It's vertical with the river.
Yeah, it's going with.
Yeah, yeah, somebody, somebody there had a picture and showed it to me. Because the locals that had told, had reported and said, made it sound like the I-beam was running lengthwise with the bridge, which was causing an obstruction. But it's running crossways with the bridge, which shouldn't create any obstruction. Something might get hung up on it, you know, if it's, if it's that high, if you have a big branch or something, it might hang up on that and cause it, but. For the most part, debris should go right past it, I would think.
That's the one on Highway twenty or?
Yeah, yeah.
And again, the, the locals that have been there forever will argue, you know, uh, night and day is that they. You know, that bridge was lower and then, and it should have been elevated and, and again, and then the cattle crossing that we did the pipes for. Back in eleven or whenever we did that, cut the highway and put pipes in. Um, you know, there used to be a cattle under crossing there that relieved some of the pressure, so again, that was before my time, so.
Um, anything else?
No, sir.
I don't really have anything, the biggest thing I would have briefed on probably was the JL project coming up and we've already talked about that, um. I've been working with, uh, like I said, contracting attorney to get that contract done, hopefully have it done on the ninth, so we can sign it at the same time as we begin that. Begin that, uh, session. Um, rounding up existing plans for the, for the, you know, pre-plans for the JL and the. And the DA's office so that they'll have the, that work to look at and consider when they're doing their design. Um. What's that? Oh, yeah, that's, that's every day.
Yeah.
Um, the recycling, modernization and recycling act, um, mandated that, that counties have to, well. Municipalities and counties have to, um, increase our recycling, the items that we recycle and, um. To include glass and, and other types of, uh, paper products or whatever, you know, glossy products. And whatnot, um. We don't have to because of our size, the two cities don't have to participate because they're under four thousand in population, they don't have to participate. I still don't think it's right that that, that we have two communities that are under four thousand, that then it comes on the shoulders of a county. Um, and I still, and I really have, have argued that with them and had county council look at it and, um. But I, I disagree with, that it falls just on the county's shoulders to do that, but in doing so, uh, Rimrock Recycling is working with. Um. Um.
Circular Action.
Circular Action Alliance, S A, C A A, um. Who is kinda contracted with the state of Oregon to manage the increased recycling, uh, program is. It's kinda weird the way they do it, they, they're a national company that works in multiple different states that have these same kind of recycling. Uh, requirements and they got the contract for Oregon. Um, initially, there was supposed to be the producers, anybody who produces an item of recycling such as a styrofoam food container. Would have to pay into a fund, uh, for the recycling of that material when it's reached the end of its life and, and, um. So there was supposed to be all kinds of money in this fund and, and municipalities and counties and whatnot would be able to, to get equipment and. Uh, F T E funding and all kinds of stuff for this increased recycling requirement. And as it's come down to it and as the deadline is here and we're supposed to start recycling, we're like, well, we need a forklift, we need a, a. A, a baler, a, a cardboard baler, we need, uh, no, that's not within the program. So all that funding that was, that was initially kind of. For lack of a better word, promised is now not there. Um, but Rimrock is working through it, um, they're gonna continue to be. The nonprofit that we're gonna partner with to provide that recycling requirement.
What agency is it that regulates recycling?
It's Oregon D E Q is, is who the, the program management is through. But the agency that is, uh. What would you call it, this kind of contracted to manage it, is that C A A, the Circular Action Alliance? It, it's, it's convoluted and it's, it's not easy to navigate, one person tells you one thing, another person tells you something else. Um, we don't, because of our population size, we don't have to do curbside pickup and, and whatnot, but it would almost be easier. To be honest, but then, but then, um. Uh. C and B sanitation, because they're contracted with the cities, doesn't have to participate. It would be easier too, if they, because they have it all set up there, it would be easier for them to just do curbside pickup. And recycling on site there and trans- transition all of that recycling work to C and B. But C and B doesn't wanna, doesn't wanna deal with it. So. Other than that, it's just, I just day-to-day stuff, really.
I have a tour with the federal highway for Steens, um, finally, um. Their project manager got ahold of me and the sixteenth of October, got an onsite visit. And basically a workday, um, sit down and dangle over, you know, um, talking points. Um, issues that may be, um, that, you know, may arise during the project, but. Can't really given a timeframe of, of when that project will happen, but at least we've got a project manager.
So, in that project.
Yes.
Um. Talking about Andrews and road diversion. I don't know if we really have myself, I mean, just speaking off the top of my head, that we really have the funds to do that diversion, right? So, but the question is, do we try to find funds or, or make a decision on what we're gonna do there before that pavement gets laid down?
Well, and that'll be one of the, the topics in that day, um, you know, number one, um, you know, I, I. Requested a safety person from their, um, uh, department. Come out, take a look at the, the two issues, the corner there at Williams and, and, and then the going through Andrews, uh, to. You know, just to basically see if, you know, if it's a red flag to them, um, can we get by with just signage? Extra signage, um, and, you know, see if they're okay with that, so that was, you know. What I wanna bring up at that, at, that, that day, that meeting, but you know, right now, I'm, I, it, well, I'm paving through there. It wasn't part of the, 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 you know, the initial project, um, and you've got. Um, family members that disagree with that and I, I just, I, I didn't wanna get in the middle of it.
Yeah, I, I agree and I understand the dynamic down there too, I think, um. What we as the court may need to do is after you have this meeting, we may need to put that on the agenda and discuss it. And then decide whether or not, cause, cause it's a county court order that was, that the county court enacted and. Whatever the date on that is, I can't remember now.
Oh, five, something.
Yeah, um, it's not an order by the state or by, uh, by federal transportation or anybody else that directed us to do that. That was an order that the county court enacted, which means it could be rescinded by county court, um. So, in order to clear that issue up, if that's the route we're gonna end up going, that may be what we have to do is rescind that order.
And.
Do you wanna ride along on that or is it better to not have a bunch of selfie suits come?
I, I, I mean, I think it's, you know, I, I would imagine it'd be open to anybody that, that, you know, I mean, as far as county court, like, cause they're public, so. They have a big, big, but, uh, um, they wanna have an onsite and then I would imagine we'll meet afterwards at my office and. And kinda have a round table of, um, issues, they, you know, one of the topics were, um, in-kind service that, that we could provide. Um, and, you know, of course, we have, we have a, uh. One point seven. The percentage of the match, but anyway, it's, it's, uh, you know, it'll be close to, I mean, they've got a price tag of six point nine, so. I, I think it's ten point seven is what it is, a match dollar way, so either we pay six hundred thousand, um. To, you know, to put up the money or we provide some kind of service during that project and I just don't. In the past, we've never been able to federal highway specs be able to provide that service, even though that we. You know, we paved, we built roads, um, and, you know, there's roads that we run on today that were paved in the nineties. And still running on them, uh, but we, you know, there's a, there's a federal spec that we just. We, we can't meet, whether it's crushing the material or paving, um, when they're, they're paving the asphalt, so. Um when they're at, you know, paving the asphalt. So typically, we've paid that. But that's gonna be one of the discussion points.
Yeah. Whether it's using, like you said, in in-kind work, whether it's our our staff and our trucks hauling material. Or crushing material. Well, and that doesn't, when you add that that matching cost or expense on top of that whole project. And then you're trying to come up with money to divert the road itself, right, what's been proposed. That just creates more expense than we either have or don't have.
Right.
Anything else? Alright, so let's call it done. Um Harney County Court will stand adjourned at ten or twelve fifty one.
Yeah.